Okay, so today is January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and it is now six thirty, almost six thirty-one, and I call this meeting to order. And I'll do roll call first. I'm Catherine Glaze. Terry Warner.
Here.
Matthew McGovern.
Here.
Laura Fowler.
Yes.
Mike McClabb.
Here.
And Sam Clinton.
Here.
Okay, if you would all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. And please remain standing for the invocation.
Okay, let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day that we've had, for the weather cooperating with us today. I pray that you be with the proceedings of this meeting and help us as we make decisions that might honor you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we do have a few public comments. The first one is Bill Glaze.
Yeah, I guess I'm.
Yeah?
I wanna build our.
You know, I got it for them.
Oh, I see.
Well, I guess as you all know, I'm Bill Glaze, and I've been the president and the director of the home fire department for five years. We have our annual barbecue, which he's handing out to firefighters, too. On Sunday, March second, from three in the afternoon to seven, the location is before the Martindale.
Right.
Yeah. I'm very proud of our incredible volunteer. We have been, we have protected the citizens of our community for over fifty years. They don't want fifty-one. Firefighters and EMTs are led by Chief Germer. Chris has been incredible, highly trained, motivated, or has built an incredible, highly trained, motivated, and dedicated staff. I got here five years ago, Chief Germer was twenty-five years old. Going on forty-five, one of these days. Done. I just can't say enough good things. We've had two fundraisers on my watch. On the first one, I wanted to net at least five thousand. I was told by some that I'm being unrealistic, but we netted twelve thousand. On the last one, we netted fifteen thousand in spite of unbearable heat that summer and the Cowboys' first game of the season right on top of it. With our live auction and our incredible auctioneer, Mr. Germer, who's Chris' father, saved the day, and we did pretty well. With the funds, along with donations, grants, and accident recovery, we have purchased both of the tacos, which you guys see in front of the station out there. We call them squads. We refurbished the interior of the old station, including insulation, lighting, and air conditioning in the office area, air conditioning in the office area. That place was unbearable to work in. We had vehicles freeze up in the summertime, I mean winter time, and you just couldn't hardly work. That insulation, it's blown in, and you can put your hand on the inside and the hand on the outside, and there's just no from there. It's wonderful. So we're, we're relieved with that. This year, we purchased a slide for the back of a brush truck. And what a slide is, it's the whole unit that goes into a brush truck that has the water tanks on it, the pumps, and all the peripheral stuff. We got it on a grant. We applied for it ten years ago. The grant was for twenty thousand dollars. The price today is thirty-seven thousand, but fortunately, I have the money to pay for that, so we can do that. And then our plans for next year was to purchase a newer brush truck chassis. Wouldn't be a new one. We've not been able to afford any new stuff, except for the ATV that we have. And that truck chassis would have been for the new slide that we have. So right now, it's mounted on a very, very old water truck that we're just putting on now, so. So that was our plans, was to buy this year's fundraiser to purchase the new one. As most of you know, the Beershed family was burned out of their home last night, and the Beersheds, third generation, own the Wadupi Gas. They have been such a pillar in our community. And you know, honestly, they've been in business nine years. So we've been in business in the fire department for fifty years. The city's been in existence for forty years, I guess. And, and Beersheds, from all generations, have done more support in our fire department than anyone, including the city. This city, back five years ago, before we had the E S P, we were self-funded. We just, you know, we raffled through every penny we could get, and the city gave us four hundred a month sporadically. It didn't happen most of the time. So, so that's all behind us now, and, and we do have funding, not for us, for what I do, but for the fire, fire department for, from, from the E S P funds. So that's been a, a big change. But anyway, the Beersheds, Justin is third generation. He's the oldest one, kind of runs the show over there. Four children of their own, one adopted child, and they've just, I understand, just finished remodeling their house. We don't still don't know what happened, but they got a new little dog, and it woke Justin up at, at one in the morning and got up in the place was filled with smokes. He got up and he had to get five kids out of the house, and he had burns all over the back, all over his back, third degree, first grade on, on his face. And, and he'll be back to work on Monday because that's the way they do things. And Monday, everyone will be crying for propane, right? And so, so they've done incredible things for us. I think probably over the years, they've probably given our fire department eighty-plus thousand dollars. Last year, I would go to them each year, and they would give us three, four thousand pounds or so. And last year, they said, well, you know, we're just gonna support your auction. And one of the things that we did, we took poster, had all, everybody on the fire department sign it, framed it very nicely, and their bid was one thousand three hundred dollars for that. They were, they were bid up, but that was good. They are hanging on to that and building the station and build whenever that may be, and it will go in the new station then. So they're donating it back. So they're just incredible. So one of the things that we have to decide, you know, we've always known what we're gonna do with our money, and we've done, we've done well with it. But this year, I think we need to pay back to the Beersheds. And so my board meeting is on Tuesday. We'll have another discussion if we're all on the same page. The fundraiser.
Oh, my God, be careful. Did I disrupt something?
They had a trip called very, but no.
I did, why? Oh, just all kinds of things. Actually, far as kind of like bring your own thing.
Oh.
So we're just, if you did whatever, we got some coloring paint. And cookies. Oh, it's definitely. Bunka was gonna be on January the twenty-fifth. And then the other thing I did wanna mention, and I don't know exactly when it starts, but we got a grant from, lost me, and they are gonna be sponsoring a, it's an arts and, I have the information right there, Save Children. It's an art-based curriculum. It's gonna start, I think, at the end of January. It's gonna, it's gonna be twice on Saturdays. Four kids. It's gonna include art, music, yoga, and theater. I think we're gonna get Terry Hendricks to come in and work with the kids, and it's gonna be really cool. So, and then the last thing I wanted to let you all know is, this is a new, newest thing, is we have, because we are an accredited library, we have a new app, and it's called Boundless. And it has bound, B-O-U-N-D-L-E-S-S. And it has access to thousand eBooks and audiobooks. I do think you need positive. I think you need to just be a member. Just come in and get a library card. Doesn't cost anything, but then you'll have access to that. And we used to have different ones, but this is like new and sort of, it's really good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we hope that Mary Beth gets well quickly.
Yeah, everything's going around right now, so she's doing well.
Okay, let's move on to the city administrator update.
All right, guys. Yeah, so staffing. I had to collect my notes on what it was we're talking about. So the two staffing updates. First, as some city council members may know, Letty Chappa's last stay was middle of December. We don't plan to backfill that position as a, as a city municipal clerk or court clerk, as we look to combine our utility clerks and court clerks. There's been some friction in doing that. Concerns amongst the staff about workload during the transition with the new judge coming on, and some projects that they're working on to help that transition out, and not having our payment system in place yet to manage court payments. And so we're at, at a minimum, we're gonna delay that full integration until the payment system is set up to manage the court payments online. Once that's in place, we'll take another evaluation on what the workload is looking like at that point, and then try to make that merge happen. It does cause some difficulties because right now, we're understaffed without the, the combining of those two duties. We're understaffed by one on our utility clerks and understaffed by one in our court clerks. So two, two ladies that we have doing that job right now are really filling in a lot, and Deanna is also helping cover down on the, some of the utility clerk stuff. So hopefully, we'll get those payments set up soon. There's also some of those concerns regarding workload issues and move forward. The difficult thing is each of them are in a place of, I'm the only one who's doing the court, and I'm the only one doing utilities. That is, both those things are true right now, but by combining them, you have a partner to help you out with both your duties. It's just making sure that we have enough time to dedicate to the cross train. Right now, I think Mayor, we're looking at doing kind of once a week, going forward, acclamation, what was your job? What do you do? And then we'll start layering on more responsibilities as we go. Any questions on that? All right. The, the, yeah. The other, the other staffing update is James Liel, our code inspector, has resigned. Last meeting, last Thursday, did not live up to my standards at all of being prepared for the meeting. And the mayor and I had some conversations about accountability. Each of us individually had conversations with the chief. The chief had conversations with James, and at the end of those conversations, he submitted his resignation, and he's taken next two weeks to wrap up his files, to hand over to the city, and then we'll move on from there. Right now, I do not plan to immediately backfill that position. I want to see where the rest of the staffing goes and how things work out with the municipal, the utility clerks, the court clerks combining, and then also see what happens going forward in the, in the spring and with some elections pending, and they, new council might have some ideas on that. So I think we'll probably wait to backfill at, for a few months at least, I would think.
So what you're saying, we probably won't hire code enforcement guys till after the election? Is that what I'm kind of reading?
And I, it depends on what the ballot looks like. If, if this current council is all running unopposed, then we might make a different decision. We can talk with council about that. If there are new candidates running and we're, we're not having the same, there's not a guarantee of competency. Depending on how things are looking with staffing and where we're at, that might be something you make till after the election to have a re-engagement on. As you guys know, the code enforcement was something that was highlighted in our five-year strategic community plan envisioned Martinville twenty-twenty-five, and that's one of the impetus to hiring that position. A lot of good work has been done with his predecessor and himself on, you know, weed and brush abatement issues and dump nuisance vehicles and other things. But one of the pri, one of the big focuses for that job was to get after some of the subcenter structure stuff. And that didn't go as well as it should have.
That live, live in line. You know, it's, it's, it was a pretty good lifetime from Bubba Ranky was our last, I believe, our last code enforcement guy.
Yeah, that was like twenty fifteen.
Lee Rust, yeah.
Yeah, Lee Rust, D. Lee Rust, as Bubba Ranky.
There was a gap between twenty fifteen to about twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, so there's a good six-year, maybe seven-year gap. And there was, one of the things that we, that's a struggle right now is everybody on staff, everybody on staff except for the police officers and their chief police are part-time. And so when there are critical tasks we done, those tasks are responsibilities of these people. And so it's difficult with part-time folks to maintain the accountability and oversight you need, and you rely heavily on people to fulfill those tasks. And so we had a conversation about that, and he chose to submit his resignation, and we accepted him.
So I believe, too, there was a pretty good gap between Bubba Ranky and from Lee Rust. There was probably several years.
Oh, that's what I was talking about, the six, seven-year gap was between Bubba and.
And I think if I remember correctly, Bubba Ranky was almost full-time at that time. And at, at that time, we had budget problems. So I mean, at this point in time, the city can't really afford, if I assume a full-time code enforcement guy, if I remember.
Certainly not. And I know I've had conversations with city council about the organizational structure of the city, you know, including my position to administrator being full, full-time or not. You know, the, the role of mayor, and we, we've had wide-ranging conversations about how, how to best handle some of those issues. And I think I think there should be an opportunity for council to look at that again, either as, as it's currently constituted now or after the election, to, to take another look at those organizational structures to see what's the best path forward, especially as we get into a new budget year. Because right after that election, we started working on the next budget, and some of those have significant budgetary considerations, you know. What, what positions are you hiring? Where's, where's your limited resources being allocated, and how are those being, in terms of staff? We'll have a, you know, unless Catherine wins election again, you know, what she could do, but, you know, you never know with the mayor position. There could be a whole good council. I think what, there's three positions on, on the ballot, including the mayor, so it could be, it could be a whole, whole new look with priorities at that point, so.
I had a question. You said that you were apparently, I guess, disappointed in his performance or his evaluate or his meeting on Thursday, and, and I know that we.
I, I would say I was disappointed that we didn't meet the standards that I would set the city staff to. And there, my shoulders are part of that failure. But at the end of the day, there were things that needed to be addressed, that were directions that were given that were not accomplished to the standard that we expect us, ourselves.
So the reason I'm asking that is that we had started performance appraisals on all employees every six months. And from what I remember, James has been here longer than a year, and I'm trying to think when we ever gave him a performance appraisal or an evaluation of, of his work duties. And I think we've been lacking on that on all paid employees in the last year. We need to.
We don't do appraisals every six months. They're once a year.
Once a year. Well, it's been longer than a year than on him and others. I can't remember the last, last time. That's just to mention.
Let, let me also, so the city council does appraisals on the officers, and then like the chief would do an appraisal on somebody under his supervision, which would be his officers and the code enforcement. So that wouldn't be for the city council.
But then he would report back to us perhaps of what his outcome or what he found out from that appraisal, and so that has not happened. But Bureau Veritas does have building inspectors. They inspect things once a building permit is submitted. They, they expect, they inspect work midway through and towards the end. What type of the possibility is there for a Bureau Veritas building inspector to say be on call or, or say, come by and check this dilapidated building? I mean, we were starting to get the ball rolling, if somewhat mismanaged, even on proofreading his letter. Nobody proofread his letter. And I think that's where one of us may have fallen through the cracks on that. The letter wasn't signed, the date was wrong, the location was wrong.
Already dealt with all of that.
Well, we haven't. That's, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about is that, under the supervision of the chief of police, he has talked to James. James does have a full-time job besides this job, so he decided to give his resignation. So I feel that that has all been dealt with.
Okay, I'm just saying, but because of what Jared has said about his letter, no, about his letter not being right or, but we're talking about, about something that should have been proofread anyway.
Well, that's, and you are correct, but it has been dealt with.
Yes, okay. But I'm saying we need to learn from that. Apparently, we have, but we were getting a good momentum on the code enforcement, and I don't know if we need to really wait that long, but we'll speak about it later.
Yeah, it's a, it's a difficult thing, right? Because every staff position, even if part-time, costs money, and it's a, I would hate to go out. The hiring process takes about sixty days in, in the city, frankly. Sometimes it can go a little bit quicker than that, but most times it takes sixty days. If we look sixty days from now, we're in mid-March, closing in on April, the election's a month away, and that new council may have new ideas on the city manager, city administrator's role, whether that should be remained part-timer. And if we went out and went through the sixty-day process to hire somebody, and then thirty days after that, that council decides to take the organization in a new direction in terms of how staffing's allocated, I would hate to bring on somebody and then for them to necessarily be let off, you know, a month later. So I, it's just, the timing is difficult. I think the need is there. The community has spoken to that in their strategic planning process of desiring that code enforcement. And James did a lot of great work for the city, especially on the weed and brush issues, and maintaining accountability on, on some of the rubbish and, and things like that, and providing notices and engaging with the community, door hangers and conversations. That's a, that's a valid function, an important function that I don't think we'll be able to achieve with the current staff without James here. But I also think that it's, I would hate to be, put, put somebody in a position of, you're newly hired, then we fired. If the, if the city council make up for the change or their, the desires would be to organize the city in a certain way, so. Okay, that'd be kind of a rock. The, the calendar's working against us.
You know, I remember the old days with the Randy Bucker administration. We had a full-time city manager. We had a full-time code enforcement. The town almost went bankrupt. We had all these salaries, and we couldn't afford it. And the way you work things, I think it's worked very well, having part-time, until we. Until we get our revenue up. We, we're on a shoestring budget and I know we got to be a little patient. We got somebody part-time. And we live and learn. Nobody's perfect.
Doesn't mean that we can't do code enforcement. The police department and the police chief and our police officers can still cite violations where they're, where they're seen. It's just we won't have a dedicated person to do that.
Well, and we're always reevaluating positions and we may combine like a permit person with the code enforcement.
But we'll probably wait your right till after the election.
Select plane administrator too. We really need that. Thank you.
That's all I had.
Okay, we're going to move on to city clerk. She has some information about the election.
Yeah, so simply just the candidate packet. This is just the agenda. So the notice of deadline to file an application for place on the ballot. It is, the dates are now effective, January fifteen, as in yesterday. All the way till the deadline of February fourteen, twenty twenty-five. On the packet, the packet can be found on our website. Martinville dot Texas dot gov. We hover over the government tab. We go down to the. Elections tab over here. And right here is the notice and over here, May fourth election candidate packet. I'll fix that date, but. The good thing, the content is correct.
You know how many pages it is?
It is five hundred and thirty-six pages. There is a condensed version at the end of it.
I'm gonna go buy some.
Gosh, it's really hard when you work on two different devices throughout the day. No, so the condensed packet has.
The city printed it for me when I did it.
Just be assured, be assured that when I say that you hover over the govern, the, the government tab and you click the elections. On that link, the packet of five hundred and thirty-six pages is there. Not everything is required. Towards the end, there is a condensed version. However, in the table of contents, it explains to you where that condensed packet starts. That condensed packet is essentially the required pages. Unless there is a special case, that's when you have to get the read, the read such as like the amended forms. Or the paper, paper filing forms, et cetera. So it's on a base, on a case-to-case basis, but. If you're simply sending it over email, the ones you go straight to the condensed packet, of course, you want to read the packet if needed. But if it's, if it's not the first time running, just head over to the condensed packet. Everything's on there. Valuable information is on the complete packet though, so. You don't have to print the whole thing, but it wouldn't be a bad idea to look over it. It gives you tips such as, you know, like your campaign signs. Paper filing, only paperwork. I'm slowly accommodating to, to the, the elections run. And working to get up, up to the standard of it. I do have a meeting coming up with our, our county elections administrator. So any questions you have, you can go ahead and direct them to me. Because I will have those answers as the weeks develop. And, you know, by next week, for sure, I'll have those answers.
The question, or is, is there going to be a shared cost with the county? Is there going to be a school board election or something?
So not, not as, I believe not a school board. It, 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 it should run as just like last year. Because we are handling with the same county administrator.
We don't have the contract yet, but we are gonna contract with the county. They have all the machines and.
What I'm saying is, but usually there's a cost split. If there's county judges or whatever. No, we're not doing a special election. I mean, usually county has something. I save that money, you know.
And they'll set up the polling places.
Right. And like I said, any questions, feel free to direct them to me. I will do my best to do a speedy response, same-day kind of response, you know. Yeah, I'm really trying here, so just any questions, direct them my way.
Okay, thank you. Yes, she is doing a great job. Okay, wastewater, Pete. Pete, after your report, you might want to stick around for later for the Apex thing that we have to vote on for the. Later in the agenda where it says Apex to upgrade the Madison lift station for the surge protection. In case we have questions about that.
We need to Pete. Your expertise to hang around a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Martinville apartment, they had, I think, had a high level of alarm.
Wasn't a towel, was it?
But we tweeted out, we took the public.
What was that? What was in the pump?
Some. Some toilets. They're hard to break down. They're battles with pumps.
It's probably time for another ladder to go out. Please don't, even though they say that you can put those toilets down.
Somebody can send one in. I have one in this time.
This is, but when's the last time you sat? This is kind of a continual problem.
It's been, it's been a while. It had been a long time.
Yeah. We could do another reminder in the newsletter.
Or you can mark the same.
Not to put them.
I think I asked this question before. Is there any way to put some kind of filter or something?
You can, I, I think there's some illustrations that is.
I mean.
A bar screen against a small bar screen.
Because that, because really that's the main, that's our problem child.
Yeah, I mean, that's what damage in the pump. But we put the pump back in and I told the mayor that it was having a little bit of a. Struggle against the pump. There was a little noise coming out of it. Just beware of that.
Let me clarify, that's the only place we have a problem.
We haven't had, we haven't, we haven't had a clogged pump in the. That crocking over there.
Just that particular pump. So this has happened. I, I will hold you to the exact, how many times does that happen?
Twenty-four, I'll have to go, I have to go back.
Once a year?
I would think maybe once or twice a year.
And how much does that cost us typically? Probably just off of your head thinking that.
Couple of hours, three hours, I guess.
Your time plus the.
Yeah. Putting it back in.
Depends on if they have to run it manual or not. So sometimes it, anywhere between a thousand to three thousand dollars.
I'll, I'll keep rambling here. Is, is there a way to? If we know it's their cause of the problem, is there any way to, to charge them extra?
So unfortunately, there, we discovered after when we threw the budget season last year. There's a contract that the city has with the apartments regarding how their fees are structured. Because we were going to move, part of the budget was to move them from a commercial rate, from a residential to a commercial rate. And they let us know that there's a contract the city signed that was still valid that. That we, we would, we would. Well, that's what I understand.
How long is the contract?
I never saw it myself. I didn't, I didn't review it myself, but that's what the staff was telling me was. I was looking at it. They said there's a contract that they're at the residential rate, so the commercial.
I guess my point is, oh. I know it's a contract, but there's no way we could do a fine or a charge for that, for his time. If we got a pump failure, if we, if we know exactly it's coming from them.
That'd be really difficult to do because it's not. I think there's a couple of other properties that are beyond just the apartments themselves. So you don't know that specifically the apartment residences. And then I'd be really, it'd be real challenged to do that because. What do you do if the clog happens at Crook? Find the entire city, you know, so. And but it would, it could have been somebody between Madison and Crook. You know, it's, it's hard.
It's hard, yeah, like you said, it's hard to pin, some other people service, they have service.
But just by process of elimination, I mean. But I'll leave it there. Someone could review that contract though.
When did you happen to?
I think I've seen that contract. But I don't remember if it's open-ended. I'd have to look at it again. I was just verifying one time what we built them. And found the contract in there in the file cabinets.
One, one more point, there's no way to put a, a filter or some kind of like.
It's gonna be an easy fix.
That's an expensive fix. Because now you're creating solid hazardous materials that we have to dispose of. That have to be handled in a certain way prior to disposal. And then you're paying for that disposal, people collecting it. So it's. When. We don't have a large city like New York City. They have them all over the place, the catchmings and stuff. But they also own the entire life cycle of solid waste, hazardous waste and wastewater. When you, when we're, when you don't have. Those e- elements all within our control, relying, you're paying for that, that privilege to, to bring in that extra work.
Days you'll get a big grant or something.
Yeah, and you know, probably wouldn't be too difficult. To find, there's places that take it, that take the hazardous ways. It's the collection and transportation that comes. The most difficult part of that is the collection, how you collect it and then transport it to a facility that can take that material. Because you're going to be kept, our, our pumps have grinders on them. Teeth on them and they'll chew through quite a bit. Sometimes if it just gets too much all at once, it'll bind up. So. There's probably a lot that would be caught in a grate. For example, if it's coming out of the, out of the pipe and they have a catch grate, you're probably catching a lot of stuff in the grate that might. Make its way through the grinder. We just don't know about it. And you're collecting quite a bit of material that would have to be. Cleaned off and collected. Probably, probably every couple of days, I would think.
So is there a manager of that one?
What's that?
Is there a contact we could?
We've been having.
Well, we, we use, like, in terms of like hazardous waste.
No, no, I mean, or is the, the manager of that, of that apartment. Is there some kind, anybody in charge or?
There's somebody there.
There's, yeah, there's, there's like a leasing office, but the ownership is in Louisiana. And it's kind of a corporate ownership and they do subsidize housing in Texas, Louisiana and probably some other states, so they're. Every once in a while, they'll come to us asking for our support on like a HUD funding opportunity.
There's your opportunity right there.
So we could, that, that comes up every few years. It hasn't happened in a little bit, but if we get another one of those requests. We can look at it because they use it to get some subsidized help on updating the kitchens and replacing some of the cabinetry and countertops and different things and. Refreshing the facility so they're not quite as.
Good time for a conversation.
I'm sorry, a pop, what were the?
A conversation about their problems of flushing the wrong stuff down the toilet. Yeah, this, this is, this goes on about twice a year.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, but they're, they're flushing.
Things.
The wrong, the wrong whites down, four whites.
I remember the last time the mayor went personally over there to deliver letters to ask them.
Yeah.
I've talked to somebody before, but. If they're there. They got a home number there. I called the number to, 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 who's the analyst, supposed to voice that.
And that's a difficult thing to police. And this, this problem is not unique to Martinville. It is every city under in America.
Yeah, didn't y'all go to Sam Marcus and check with Sam Marcus about like, is there a better way to handle it? And they kind of said no.
Well, they do the same thing. They have screens. They deal with a lot of the same problem.
Yeah.
It's just part of the system.
I have some friends that work with city and they, they went through a lot of trouble with pumps. They're drawing towels and all kinds of stuff. I don't know. I didn't, they didn't go through a lot of detail, but they did some things.
There's, there's some examples on the internet where. What, what we benefit from is we don't have a lot of restaurants on our, right, right now in our lines. But the moment you get a lot of restaurants, the grease will glob onto those rags and it'll really plug them up. And so bigger cities, you'll have these ragged-up grease balls that are like the size of a Volkswagen coming out of, quite literally. Size of a Volkswagen coming out of those pipes. So it, there's, we, there's a lot of public education that cities have tried to do on. Although it says a disposable wipe, they're really not. I think there's been threatened litig- litigation over, over it. You can take for, if you have a high school student or middle grade or junior high school student who wants to do science experiment. Here's a fun one. Take some paper towels and put it in a mason jar with some water or water, do it with the same with toilet paper and do the same with a disposable flush wipe. And every, every couple of days, shake it up. And within, you know, the first or second shake of the one with the toilet paper, it kind of turns cloudy. The one with the disposable flushable white stays solid and never disintegrates.
I have something equally disgusting, just to catch the whole. We started, we, we started using for a short time. That, there's something called the grow collaborative. You can order these like non-toxic things because you may not know this, because like a lot of dogs. So we wanted non-toxic stuff that we put and it was, they sell this toilet paper that's bamboo. And they sell paper towels that fit that are made of bamboo. And they're like, oh, this is so like environmentally friendly because you can replant bamboo and it grows quickly. As opposed to trees that like have to mature. And that was a tree. So we tried that and it's like the wipes, the same problem from between our house and the street. We had to like pay to have that intact because none of it, I'm not, I'm trying not to, to go there, but like it, like it was, it doesn't, but that, that. That experiment, you put a Volkswagen, had a little thing of bamboo toilet paper. It doesn't know where. It doesn't, nothing happens. It just sits.
Thanks for that information.
No, it was, it was expensive to fit. I mean, not to buy, not to fit. So in case you want a list of things, like white disposable wa- disposable white, bamboo toilet paper or paper towel.
Maybe we have a, we.
There are disposable, disposable wipes that are completely frangible. And I think they would resolve.
For a middle schooler to validate.
Okay, let's move on. We're getting way off track. Okay.
And then probably the next station, they had a, I gotta replace that, that hour meter on the, on that pump that's running. It went out. So I gotta get it. I'm working on that, getting it replaced.
So the hour meter's important because that tells us how much is being pumped to the treatment. So without that, we don't know our. Total gallons of stuff being.
And we.
Do we get a quote on installation of the pumps and clean out the, the other pump bowl system? I know that for a while it was in the back of your truck. Do we ever get a quote on the installation of that?
Well, there, there was a guy that, that came to look at it. There was two guys, but I don't know if they sent, they sent any force in or not.
I don't think I saw anything.
Almost eight, one, and I think the old, it leaves the, I think the John Brady.
Would you mind reaching back out to them? To confirm if they've sent it and then maybe they can see.
I have to beg him to come down here, I'll be have time.
Alright.
You said John Gray?
John Gray, yes sir. Yeah, he lived uh, Jane K Utilities and the other one is A A one Utilities. I'll get with. And uh, we have, we certainly did the influence of the of the ponds, they are raised ponds and. We collected our samples, take the pH data. We have recorded the influence regions, check the flow. And uh, we check out the wiring of the panels. Those stations and we had like about two and a half feet of pre-4. In the ponds.
Okay.
I just got one more thing.
Okay.
And uh, the last two days of this uh, on the, on the report for the influence.
Yes.
I I estimated the last two days, the December, because I didn't have the barrel top. Uh, they probably pumped about a million two hundred ninety thousand gallons. One million two hundred ninety thousand forty eight gallons. And we averaged about forty one thousand two hundred fourteen gallons for the month. And uh, we uh, the maximum goal was a hundred and forty two thousand, a hundred and sixty gallons. We smoked. And then the minimum was a forty seven thousand two hundred thirty two gallons.
That's insane.
Lot of water.
It's a lot of water. It's a lot.
It is a lot of water.
What was going on on the twenty third? We do we do we have a rain event?
Well, you see there's two.
Oh, okay. Okay.
No, but forty one six is a high number.
Yeah, that's uh, it's getting up there, yeah, it's usually the.
Thirty thirty two to thirty six.
Yeah, thirty six is usually high. Yeah, and I think because of the holidays.
So later in the agenda, you had sent this from Apex Electrical for a panel repai- replacement. That's not the same thing as this runtime clock.
Oh, no, that's that's something way different.
Yeah, that's on the Madison Lift Station, isn't it?
And that was on the Jared's, this is the put in there, it's 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 to protect the station and the pump and all of the.
So have you sent us anything on this runtime clock? I don't remember seeing anything.
First time I mentioned it.
And it, it, when did it go out?
Part of the end of December.
Okay. So when can you get us some estimates on that?
I called the guy yesterday, so whenever he gets it.
Cause it sounds like that's more critical maybe than the Apex thing.
The good thing with that, with the, the destination, you can, you can estimate a little bit, you know, then uh. Versus uh, losing the, losing the whole station starters and all that stuff, what we went through the other day, if you want to do that. You want to put that circuit protection in there.
Are you gonna take the clock from one system or on the other?
I was thinking about doing that the other day. Was that the one that that's the one that's not working, wanna switch it over, I was thinking about doing that. I was saying, I'm gonna get a price that I gotta replace it anyway, so. By the time being, I may do that.
Let's try it.
Yeah.
You're not talking about a lot of money, maybe any share down the front.
They're not, it's real expensive. Okay.
You're talking about me at forty fifty bucks.
Okay. Right? Okay.
But uh, that's all I got.
You uh, our experience with the tree removal around the ponds and we're gonna look at that tonight. What can you tell us briefly about your best uh, experience of how to remove those trees?
Can we talk about that when we get to that item? Because Mr. Booker's here also.
You're staying then, okay.
Yeah, cause there's two more items that's gonna relate to.
Thank you.
Uh, let's move on to the financial report.
Okay, uh, our first uh, report you're familiar with, this is uh, our basic balances that we had. Our producers uh, report on the fourteenth, at that time you see the general fund, street and road, police. Uh, utility fund, uh, one thing I wanted to point out, you see the twenty eight thousand two twenty two. That's before the solid waste bill was paid of about fifteen thousand. But it's good to see a balance growing in the utility fund account again after all the, all of the money we spent. I mean, it got down to where, you know, there was hardly anything left. For the uh, end of November, I think it was.
Yeah, cause we bought two new pumps.
Yeah, so uh, so that's good to see that balance growing again. Community Development Fund, that's grant money. So you see that one forty seven two oh two, that's all on deposit at First Lockhart Bank. Then uh, the Texpool Savings Accounts, you see we have two hundred sixty one eight twenty two in the emergency fund. Um, we haven't touched the emergency fund in many years. Uh, then you see the uh, PFIA, that stands for Public Funds Investment Act. That is a kind of a, a large savings account that with designated monies in it, you see grants, child safety. Park Mobile on down the road there, down the line there, you see the general fund overflow at two hundred seventeen thousand. That's where the property tax money uh, is held until it's needed. I only keep, you know, thirty to fifty thousand dollars in the general fund anytime the rest of it earns interest right there. Uh, long-term capital fund, we did spend seventeen thousand dollars of that money uh, on capital. Replacement of the pumps and everything at the uh, Rocket Lift Station. Uh, so total funds you see of a million thirty thousand dollars as of a few days ago. Due to controller fines, it's down to two fifty eight, seven forty six.
I had a question about Park Mobile, you can either explain it to me now or when you get to a certain line item, but I know. Number one, you were trying to get a separate checking account for that and then if you haven't, then how are you paying for? The uh, monies needed to maintain the parks if you don't have a Park Mobile. I know it's in an interest-bearing account or has some of that money been pulled out? Do you reimburse the the city from Park Mobile or how how does all that work?
Uh, there's three transactions that go on uh, related to that. Uh, we received the Park Mobile money from the prior month on about the fifteenth. It is then transferred into this uh, fund and then uh, sometime. In the second half of the month, I get a tabulation on the uh, part of the parks expenses that Park Mobile is supposed to. Reimburse and I transfer it back to the general fund. I have not um, set up a separate checking account, it's just simply going in and out of this uh, this. Uh, fund right now.
Okay, so you're paying for those expenses as you said initially out of the general fund and then you reimburse.
Yeah, and the council uh, approves those transfers uh, back and forth or a council person.
Yes.
And uh, so I, I think I've got a good, good handle on that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Oh, speaking of the Park Mobile, everybody knew our signs got stolen.
Oh, well, that's gonna be under the police report.
Oh, okay.
You guys keep getting ahead of us.
I I guess, I guess my question for you is, I assume around March is when our revenue starts really increasing with our Park Mobile Fund?
Yes.
I mean, so we need to get those signs up probably by Easter.
You know, some sometime in there, right now it's running low five hundred dollars. When it used.
So by March, we should, those signs need to be back, cause I'm like, I'll get them out. Who'll help you?
Who'll help you? We'll, we'll have to talk to him about security.
I'm sorry, I'm off subject.
Okay, the next page should be our budget report for the general fund. We through uh, December, we're fourth of the way through the year, so you look at your percent of budget over there in the far right column. You see as of the end of December, we brought in uh, twenty four percent of the property taxes for the year. A large uh, amount of money came in the first week in January. Uh, you'll see that number spike. In the next report, you see the sales tax is actually running ahead of plan. Franchise fees uh, are good. Permits are low, I guess, um, but that's the kind of thing, you know, every once in a while you'll have one for five thousand dollars and it'll really. It'll really jump up. Uh, you see interest income.
It's pretty low.
What's that?
The interest income then.
Yeah, it's not what it used to be.
What's our current rate now?
Ooh, I'd have to tell you, I'd have to look, I don't know exactly. Uh, on down, other revenues. Still getting our res- restitution. I wanna put out the court fines, looks like that's on plan. So far, so that's good. And uh, operating transfers in, that's uh, money that's come in from Park Mobile. Uh, to cover expenses in the general fund uh, from that other account. So you'd say income of one sixty seven eighty three through the first quarter. And then uh, we go, we, expenses go through departments. Uh, the general government department is, all the accounts start with zero one. That's kind of like operations right here in City Hall. Payroll, that's gonna be the, the clerks, uh, both back here and up front uh, are in there. You know, various grounds maintenance. IT, um, all those kind of things, their general government. Do you see contractual forty one thousand, we're twenty seven percent of budget. So that's uh, that's close to the plan.
Did, do we have an understanding why engineering is already at eighteen thousand, is that, is that something?
Some of it is a pass through, like he's been working on the River View. I mean, it will be a pass through, some of it is collected because of projects that we're doing.
So when we collect that, do we take it out of that or we're receiving?
No, it would be a revenue, it would be a.
So this is one thing I have to manually, mentally.
Yeah, I I haven't, you know, usually I'm asked to bill people for those, I can't remember billing anyone recently. But um, anyway.
Like that's what I'm concerned about, yeah, is that, you know, when you see, when I see eighteen thousand. And I don't see revenue for that on the other end.
Okay.
I'm concerned.
Down below, you see those two negative numbers, those are reimbursements that come from uh, the utility fund for payroll. And uh, just overhead of this uh, office. And you see those are on track, then you go into uh, uh, finance, administration and finance. We've got salaries and you've got, you know, it's the, it's the same structure, department by department.
That your payroll taxes on that is fifty four percent.
That will get re-allocated to the police department, a lot of that does, once I, I get the um. Posing increase done, this is just kind of a. But yeah, I spotted that uh, as well. Public safety, see how their payroll taxes are only ten percent?
Yeah.
Some of that'll be allocated down there once I get it accounted. So police, public safety, that's uh, that's on plan. Uh, maintenance repairs, we've had pretty good, pretty good bill on that. Vehicle, I forget which one it was. But um, got that, that fixed. Dispatch, vehicle operations, that's mainly fuel. Municipal court. Salaries, wages, um, you see the uh, down there line fifty five hundred, we don't have a budget. For the fact that our judge is contracted now, but you would kind of offset that. Then we've got park expenses that the city budget handles. Uh, that's uh, kind of things like porta potties and things like that, not, not major mowing and everything.
But isn't that what's reimbursed out of the Park Mobile funds, the porta potties?
It will be this budget here.
Well, let's look at it, I don't remember exactly what makes up the eight oh seven. But the main thing I know that comes out of the Park Mobile money is that is the mowing contract. It's uh, over two thousand dollars. So you see we're kind of right at break even through the first quarter. You can go on to uh, the utility fund. That franchise fees without a budget, that's uh, a, a fee that's added to the. What solid waste vendor, I think. It really could probably be combined into line forty four twelve, but it's a, a fee that we're allowed to charge the residents. On top of that. So you see that's utility revenues right at twenty five percent, so that's looking good. You see that uh, seventeen thousand three twenty eight transfer in. That's the money that I mentioned that we took from the capital fund to cover the cost of the capital. You roll down a little bit, uh, when we get to expenses, you'll see the expense for the pumps and such that offsets that. Administrative overhead, that's those transfers I showed you earlier that go over to the general fund. Uh, then you have the expenses of maintaining the sewer system first. Um, that's uh, the accounts that started in eighty two. Um, and then you go down after that and you'll see uh, garbage. I believe. Oh, and see the capital outlay, that seventeen three twenty eight, that's the expense for those uh. The pumps, there was a one really big invoice of some fifteen thousand dollars and then another one for like seventeen. Hundred or something. Uh, then you see our solid waste contract at forty five five seventy seven, that's right on plan. Uh, if you get down to the bottom line, you see we've spent about eleven thousand more. Then we brought in through the first quarter because of the large repair we had to do. But um. Anyway, so that's utility fund.
Yes, take that out, we're about even.
Yeah. It'll catch up, I mean, like I said, the cash flow is already catching up. Um, so, so that's good. Hotel tax running a little bit behind plan, this is special revenue, so these, these revenues are, you know, have special restrictions on them. On how they're uh, how they're spent. Uh, so hotel tax is about nineteen percent of plan. Uh, parking. Sixteen percent, layos funds, that's uh, police training, that hasn't come in yet this year. Going down. Credit card fees, see how that's not budgeted, I, I'm in the process of, uh, you know, Jared mentioned that we're trying to. Change the payer, the payment processing in the court to our current platform. And uh, I have a meeting scheduled on Tuesday with uh, that fella uh, to try to make that happen. So uh, he and I have been trading emails to death. So. There's that. And. Street improvement expenses that go against the street tax we collected. And we spent twelve hundred dollars so far in the first quarter. On down. Through that. There you go, that's a, that's uh, finances for the uh, for the uh, rural city of Martindale. And um. Well, although we're, we're, we're not so little, we've got a million dollars in the bank, that's. I'm trying to think uh, anything else I have uh, that I'm working on, continue to work on this uh, project where I'm converting the. Financials into this um. This government accounting format and uh, I should have that totally complete on Tuesday morning. And uh, ready to submit to uh, whatever audit firm that you guys uh, elect. Will need to send it to, so.
And so, I forgot to mention, we do have it on the website about the storm that's coming. That's expected, um, so we will probably not be open on Tuesday. We're closed on Monday for the holiday and then Tuesday, um, we close down the court, we close.
Yeah, I'm used to working at home with that, that guy who's helping me with this project, so we'll, it won't stop us.
Well, that's good to know. Thank you, thank you, Dwayne, okay, we're ready for the police.
Come on up, chief.
Good afternoon, how you doing?
We're still warm.
Yes, right now, I'm watching all of what's coming from uh. The uh, state mercy management, so keeping track of all that.
CB twenty three.
Uh, so patrol activities for December twenty four, we had two animal calls. Four city ordinance contacts, these are, these are the police contacts, I've heard some people talk about that. Uh, municipal court may look, we stranded a day in municipal court. Uh municipal court may look, we stranded a day in the municipal court because the judge has it, that's perfect. Um so we do the write-up duties when when he has court open. We had ten traffic hazard, traffic control. Zero crash reports with the all the rain and everything else, we got, we had a lot of imports here in December. We had one offense report. We had uh A S S County sixteen motors assistance public contacts, five parks checks, twenty-seven calls for service and one incident report. That one incident report probably will roll into a offense report. But right now, she's still an incident, he's getting a little broken into.
Should mention that car was, there were, one of our cars was in the shop for two weeks.
Yes.
But it was warranted, so we had a motor replaced, wasn't it, a motor?
Well, they they did replace the motor, they replaced the crankshaft and the camshaft and some other parts inside. Some important stuff.
But it was still under warranty.
Open hearted. Did we, did we hit an extended warranty?
No, we're not extended warranty, but it's got a hundred thousand miles on the drive train, so.
Still remain, how much, okay.
So um citations and warnings, uh there's thirty-three citations and warnings issued last month in December. And they were for various things, one city ordinance violation for littering, uh. That will change the address on driver's license, and that's important for the courts, and that's probably right, those are the lot, because if you keep up with the people that. Don't change your address on a driver's license, because that's usually the way we're going to reach out and contact them. Or the courts are going to reach out and contact them, so if we get them for that, we document our new stuff, they may have to change their address on the driver's license for either thirty days or whatever. Uh one open container. Two expired registration, one fellow maintain my responsibility, financial responsibility and twenty-six speeding. Six, yes. That was from that. Of code enforcement. We had three citizen contacts, one door hanger and six follow-ups. And those are follow-ups on the door hangers from the previous month. I heard it mentioned already, the signs from the uh the park were stolen. We have no leads, nothing gone, nothing whatsoever. Someone come over stole all the signs and the pole, the tree posts that were in.
Chief, uh you were right, because I was being cheap, I said. Thought it was brilliant, we'll get teaposts, we get them in the ground, I had my phone drowning me and I'm so proud of that. And then they jacked them out of the ground. And that just hit me in the gut. All that work and effort and some clown goes up there and steals our signs.
It's all about being petty and people don't want to pay the parking fees, is basically probably what it boils down to. They get them out of there and we go there and contact them and say, well, I didn't have a way to. I couldn't scan it, so that was the criminal mischief when they scratch out the the Q R codes. So they come up with all kind of reasons so they don't want to pay, so when we go to talk, talk to them. They have a reason, this is just another reason that people don't want to pay to use the stuff.
So real quick, none, none of them were missing from Allen Banks, right, just phase one?
Yes.
The signs, we still got our signs there.
Yes.
So I hate being that guy, I mean, that was my pet project, I was so proud of them. I would have never thought they would jack the teaposts out of it.
How do they do it?
They get, they get some kind of a jack.
Not like a literal jack?
Yeah.
I thought you were using like slang, like you mean they actually.
Like carjacking.
It's like a, it's like a grapevine.
You know what a grapevine is?
There actually is a post called Jack, it's a removing tool.
Yeah.
You can, you can see the post, you can see where they put it right next to the citations.
Also, there are all those signs.
Well, we're gonna put different posts in the next time.
We're gonna stay here the next time.
Concrete.
Yes.
They knew what they were doing because.
They did, Tommy.
They did not take the uh signs that belonged to the towing service, they pulled them out, but they just put them in a pile over there.
No, they did not.
They were just basically saying, we're not going to do anything ugly though.
So they were, we got to put concrete, rebar there, right. So dang, people are just, dang.
Why don't, couldn't we get a camera? Couldn't we get a camera to watch, I mean, or is that too expensive?
There were speculations they were taking for the aluminum.
Oh, Lord have mercy.
Yeah, that's kind of. I know someone uses a lot of teaposts, but it's not enough there and the signs, that's. They just discarded, they were all destroyed anyway, they were, some of the marker, the Q R codes didn't work. You know, we we said.
Did you know, I just saw a whole entire news thing, I was going to send it to you, I still will. Because it was a lady, a police officer lady who was saying, she was like putting this thing out to citizens saying. Um like that's how most parking is done now, and that she was standing in front of a Park Mobile sign, but not here. And uh she was saying that people, bad people, are putting new Q R codes over the Q R code. And then like you'll scan it and it's like rip roll or something, but then sometimes they steal your um your financial information.
Holy, holy.
And so they were saying, we're not trying to tell you, don't scan to park somewhere, because she is a police officer. Um she may have been parking enforcement, I didn't ask her, but she, well, she was a video, she went ahead. But she definitely said, we're not saying don't do it, we're saying like maybe you need to like touch it and make sure there's not a sticker on, like a new. Q R sticker on top of the sticker.
Yes, now that's, it's sort of like um going, getting at the gas station, they scam, they put scammers in there, get your information real quick. It's it's the same thing, it's just a different way to steal your identity, everybody's got to be aware. I'll talk to the people that are putting the signs up.
Yes.
Do it now, do it now.
See if we can come up, come up with a. I knew, we we got some, we kicked some ideas around already about uh when this, when this happened. About different way to make it impossible for someone to damage them, someone to access them and just things like that.
Yeah.
How about if we get that, that ink that's that's sprayed all over?
Yeah, they try to steal it.
Yeah, let's do that.
Anyway, that's what, that's what.
And then spray glitter out.
Unfortunately, you say, say we call these in the virtual and just give this.
Correct.
That's all right.
So I I priced some buttersticks today, the limestone blocks, they're two hundred and sixty-six dollars a piece, now that's the four foot by two foot by two foot, but. As you enter phase one part, there's a wide. Entrance, say on the right side where someone could just, you know, not go in the main driveway and go around now. I I have looked into some telephone poles to be cut at about six feet high, putting two feet in the ground. Four feet sticking up, having those about four feet apart. Uh because uh but then we talk about the entrance. To 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 block it to where they only come into that one road, but see, it wouldn't matter because we had talked about. Putting the telephone poles, putting a chain up, but then who's going to lock the chain up?
Oh, you mean to like expose it?
So you can't enter it, so we had a problem with that, saying who's going to lock the chain up, who's going to unlock it in the morning, so really. The only solution at this point almost is what Terry said is is to have a camera, I mean. Or or what, I mean, we need to, uh we're not going to go ad nauseam about it now.
Talking about, we'll have a little meeting.
But but just briefly, since I brought that up, and I have done some research, and so I would like a response because. I'm trying to get bids on installing the poles, I have called about the limestone blocks.
Looking at the timeout on the poles, so you don't get all the bids, because uh we have some suggestions. I I agree with some of the stuff you're saying.
Yeah.
That we need to funnel down the the traffic, and this can be a security briefing at some other time, but.
Yeah.
I'll talk about it right now since we're talking about it, but uh if I get off topic, please let me know, but. What I'd like to do is have it where it's funneled down and we can go in there and make it where you have to drive through a specific spot. That would, if you name the park, if you do something, you could put up a bigger sign and then up above that sign where everybody, you know, everybody's got to funnel through. That's where you could put your your Q R codes up high so that no one can handle it then. So up high, you drive through, so if we get poles like that, whether it's steel or or telephone poles or whatever, if we get someone donate those. And put them in the ground and cement it, that's all up high and then everybody has to funnel through that one way. And then there's no way that someone gets it, well, I didn't see it, I didn't do this or whatnot. You know, and plus, it would make it more difficult for someone to vandalize or destroy it and and in the future.
If it's up high.
Correct.
So I think we talked about, is is it worthwhile at this point putting a barrier, some barrier, unfortunately cars can come out.
Well, that that's what I was saying with the limestone blocks.
Yeah, and we talked about that before, I mean. Really, I don't have, I mean, sure, this happened overnight, or this happened sometime.
Thursday or Friday night.
It happened Thursday night or Friday night is when it occurred.
Okay.
I know that we're back when they were there, but.
But we can have a meeting and.
Okay.
Continue the conversation.
Yeah, we can continue that later.
Yeah, and work it out.
These people need to go home, so let's, we'll talk about it later time.
But yeah, we're we're going to have to find out more about uh sinking ten-foot steel poles in concrete in the floodway, I I don't know, I don't.
No problem.
So we'll, we'll talk about that.
We've got a lot to work out.
Yeah.
You're an expert right there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Booker's offensive.
Okay, let's move on to the judge's report.
Come on up, Judge.
Harold, Mayor and counsel, thank you all very much, Diana, thank you, I didn't know you were stepping in and helping with the court, so y'all have a crew ass.
Judge, if you ever heard somebody stealing parking signs, is that, is that a common?
I'm listening to what you're saying, that's a upset residence, y'all have it, and that doesn't like the fact that y'all are building, that's not somebody.
Well, you know, the residents go, oh, they don't pay, you're a citizen, you don't pay, it's free.
It just sounds like somebody out of town. The fact that y'all charges.
Yeah, I think you're right, quite a few.
Yeah. Um ninety days, I'll give you ninety days to give my thoughts and ideas and and I guess to see if y'all like me as well. Uh some of the things that y'all spoke about in the court, uh Jared and Mayor speak about before, and thank you very much. I didn't know that y'all were moving, that was one of the things I, that's on my wish list about online payments. That'll take a lot of stress off the clerks, so the people, less people in the courtroom, in the court, the better. Not because they're not welcome here, just because it's easier for them to pay their tickets. Yeah, so I wasn't aware that y'all had already started here before, so thank you all very much. Um yes, Letty left. Uh in her resignation letter, she did, she mentioned this to me, but not in the letter, it was pretty obvious that she wasn't interested in sharing duties. I don't know about Mary Alice, quite frankly. To be very explicit with you, it's not what the staff wants, it's what the council wants, and if that's what y'all want, it's true, and this way it goes, and they have to. They have to do it, so that's all there is to it. Let me answer about, you mentioned something about them saying there's too many projects. The court doesn't have anything that's been tasked to them, that's not, that's not a legal requirement, so there are no. I don't have any, any projects going, it's catching up work that should have gotten done. So there's no, there's nothing that we can't slow down until somebody's trained. So if there's work, and and I'll get with her, if there's something that she feels so pressured she needs to do, we can reel back on that until. Until there's training going on, because unless I'm, unless I'm nave or something, I don't think if there's any project, there's just a lot of catching up. That has been behind for so long, it's kind of hurt us to slow down a little bit while she's in training. Um the pillars of of what the court needs to be or what it'd be successful here would be. Uh community first, and that's the way that I like to run courts, where I put the community first. No one's trying to get rich through the court system, but we're trying to hold people accountable, so community accountability. And then the big one is consistency, and that got a little scary, and I think I sent something to y'all, because the court's open four days a week. Is is that happening, and I apologize for not knowing, is that happening right now?
Yes.
Okay. Um I know that everybody's part-time, I don't know where that runs into y'all's budget as far as.
She's working four days a week right now, but she does not want to continue doing that.
Okay, I understand that, and and again, I guess we'll talk some other time.
She kind of took that on upon herself, I didn't realize, I told her we could cut back to three.
My personality, I work the one as fast, so, and I don't know if that's how it's been saying, it's been a lady that. I demand a lot, so um.
Well, wait, excuse me, could you introduce yourself because maybe people don't know you?
Yes.
Yes, sir, very thank you.
Andrew Cable, Andy, I'm the new municipal judge, I'm very honored that I was selected to hold this position. The council gave me ninety days to see if they like me, and I guess I gave ninety days to see if if what I could advise them. Of of maybe how to run the court more efficiently, I don't know anything about how I was around before. I'm not pointing, I'm just saying that I've been very successful at many different levels uh running municipal courts and justice courts. Very effectively, efficiently and and cost effectively, and that's the way I treat it like a, more like a business. I don't know how many assets we're going to put into a fine that we can't collect. And then it comes a point in time where you're spending this much money to get them out and you have to keep moving. The biggest part of my philosophy is accountability, for those people who pay their citations, it's not fair. For those who are accountable to the court to let everybody else get away with not paying. So the city has graciously uh approved a contract with McCreary, uh there, I call them the big threes, McCreary, LaBarber and Purdue, those are the ones that usually handle. Municipal courts, and y'all contracted with them and I understand that they came out and uh met with y'all, or met with staff.
Yeah.
Um that's a tremendous help, what I'm going to, you can utilize those collection agencies differently when it comes to courts. Um I plan, uh of course, always with counsel approval. I plan to utilize that collecting, collection agency completely of all their services that are no fee to the city. What that means is somebody gets a ticket. We attempt to get them to pay it, they blow us off completely, we send it to collections. I'm going to enable them to completely take over the ability to try to collect that for us. And not encumber, since we have such a small staff, encumber them on trying to collect. We're going to give that to them to collect, we have enough with present payment plans and court docketting to take care of that. Where we're going to go ahead and give that to the collection agency to try to collect, it doesn't mean that they can't come in here and pay. If if they want to pay in full, but if they're going to do anything short, like a payment plan or something like that, they're going to do it through the collection agency. That's just my thoughts, I haven't met with them, I'll set that up. The unfortunate part of that is for them to do so, they're going to have to talk, and I understand that y'all have a contracted I T department. With that being said, they're going to have a lot of communication with them, and I think they're going to bill y'all for that. Not, not the collection agency, they're not billing you, but that I T department, if they have to talk to the new collection, then you can see they're probably going to do that. Um again, back to community, consistency and accountability, that's the way I like to run these courts. What I've done so far is I've engaged with the collection agency and the, and the city uh council. Backed me on that and and hired somebody, I talked to the council about being able to pay online, it looks like they're taking a step in that direction as well. Um accountability, uh there, from my understanding, if this is correct, there hasn't been any warrants issued on any. Um delinquent cases since, since the pandemic. Um I I issued over eight hundred, I think, warrants. Um because we have to have accountability. Our our, their their task or nothing, and my judgments are worthless if you don't hold people accountable. Um enforcement and judgments is also, is obviously a big thing, issue them some warrants timely and making people accountable to their their tickets, collecting is huge. Um and those are the things that I've kind to instill in the staff and what I want to see happen with the court. Of course, along with the council's approval of that, here's the wants of the court, if if y'all were to keep me in in, and think I'm doing a good job. Online account, uh payment ability, using M V B A, McCreary to its fullest ability to collect. Uh utilizing Omni, Omni Omni base is a reporting system that keeps, puts a hole on your driver's license if you haven't paid your tickets. I don't know this, I'm under the impression that it wasn't being utilized. It had, it, there's a lot more cases that can go into that, and I want to, I need some proof that they're all entered. Um the software.
We are currently using it now, have access to it now.
And there's a form.
Right, that's a question, correct?
Oh, you're asking me, yes, it's being used, I just.
Not everything.
I want to know what, I don't know why, I need to use my words, I'll actually. I need to, I need to know how many are not in there and why they are.
Um there's a form from them that needs to be filled out right now that Mary Allison and I don't know how to fill out. And I can guarantee you there's not eight hundred cases on there, uh or whatever you just.
Yeah, but and and yes, okay, and there you have it, and and there might be a reason for some of those, because some have the opportunity to come and take care of it before they go Omni. Some, if you don't have a technical driver's license, you can't enter it on. Um. But yes, we do utilize Omni, I just want to make sure it's being, like I said. I want to make sure that the software is being used completely, that I know that that encode nine. It although it's it's not the, it doesn't have everything with it, it's a good software that y'all have purchased. It can do so much more than what the court had been using for, it can do a lot more than what it's been using, used for. There shouldn't be any boxes in here. Nowhere. There should be no paper court files, they should all be digital. But that may end up requiring, I don't know if that software. Hold that whole, um I don't know the words, I might be a little. That much memory, there you go, upgrade the software for the storage of the documents, because I think, I mean, that's going to be a must. Um that way we, you know, again. A laptop up here in the front, and I told this to the mayor, I'm only here once a month, I mean, I've been coming twice a month to try to see. I'm only here once a month. I mean, I've been coming twice a month to try to see if I'm looking at going. I don't need a office. I have my laptop, because it's right there. So, um, although it's pretty cool to look at. Um, encode. Um, cop sync. We issue a lot of warrants, or we've issued a lot of warrants, probably ninety percent of people we've issued warrants for have not, Martin. Y'all don't yell at me. I've got my tickets here, but I don't know what to call you.
Martin Daleyans.
Martin, Martin Daleyans. I don't know, uh, most of them are not from Martinville. Uh, so consequently, the, the, the idea that he's actually gonna accidentally pull somebody over that hasn't worn for the rest out of Martinville, Texas. Is probably not good, and the fact that he's gonna go hunt down a bunch of people on the state level somewhere. But for his ability to know what warrants he's issued, and know when he pulls a car over, that it might be somebody he has a warrant on. Is cops and, and, and chief, I don't, I have no clue what the cost is of that, and that's why I'm saying, all of this is, is wishes. We can still be very effective without any of these additions. These are some of the wish lists.
We have it, don't we?
We do not have it.
Oh.
Oh, we have cop sync.
I apologize. Cop sync with a warrant package.
We don't have the warrant.
Oh, with warrant.
Can we get that? Can that be done first?
It's, it's pretty pricey. I wanna say it's like thirty seven hundred dollars a year to add on to the, what we already pay.
Is it considered road safety?
It'd be more officer's safety, so what would happen, um, and I'm not taking a vote, Judge.
Well, you'd have one.
If I run someone, uh, right now, I can tell if I stopped them before. And I've written them citations, I can tell a vehicle that I've stopped before, I can tell a person I've stopped before. But what I can't tell is what they did with their citation. We don't have that, that communication, that's part of the ring. So I could have wrote. Uh, well, I know for a fact, I rode a guy on a motorcycle, right? That's a speeding citation. I pulled him over about six or eight months later. I asked him if he paid the other way, I didn't pay it. But I have no way to see and.
You don't know if you really did it.
Well, well, he told me he did.
Well, I mean, I mean, that's the other way around.
Right, I, I have no way to, i- i- if you told me you didn't pay it, I still don't have it.
So then if you know that he did not pay it, then what happens differently than if you didn't know?
No, well, there I can say, hey, are you gonna pay it? We have an online payment system or whatever. Still gonna give him a citation, send him on the way. His new citation for whatever.
If he had it, and I apologize, if he had it, I mean, we don't, we don't want people to go to jail. I don't want people to go to jail.
I agree with that.
But, but if he pulls them over and he has a warrant for the rest, and he walks up to the motorcycle, he knows it. He can bring him to me or to the jail. Who would know another one?
Call them instead.
But only if he's there on a Tuesday when you're here once a month.
He can go to jail, he can go to the county.
Yes, did, did we talk about this before, Chief, about, hey, he could pay?
He could, uh, we, we talked about that, don't wanna collect money, but he can also.
It looks horrible to collect dollars on the side of the road. What you do is you follow him here. You would say, look, you're following, you're going to jail or you're going to the court, he can come here and pay it. But he would never know that, I think I could be honest and say, yeah, I got a problem.
Or if that might happen at night, though.
Well, it's the same thing. You can bring them here and pay, and, and make them pay at a, at a real pension, right? Or you can tow their vehicle and just send them on their way.
And again, I mean, it's a classic, you know, I would hope that he, he, if somebody sees, well, I'll be pulling them over twice in nine months. He can go to his house and say, you know.
If it's a warrant package, it's gonna tell them that there's a warrant anywhere else, or just here for my court?
It'll be just here for my court.
Oh, really?
Warrant sync will just be.
Well.
What the heck? Is that another package you pay for? Do you wanna know?
Right, Chief, I, I don't.
So cop sync tells us if people have got warrants anywhere else.
So I apologize.
Yes, it tells us if someone's got a, a warrant everywhere, and it, it tells us if another city, let's just say, we do get warrant sync. Um, let me think of one, I'll tell them ahead, to Waller, Texas. Wall, Wall, the city of Waller has it. And so if we run someone who got a citation in the city of Waller, it'll pop up on.
On yours?
On, on my screen, says, hey, this guy's got twenty municipal warrants out of Waller. We don't mess with those, because we just clear them out and keep on going by our thing. But, so other people somewhere else could see those same warrants and do the same thing and say, hey, you need to pay these warrants, you got warrants. Because that really, when they go like that, they can't get their license renewed, so you see a lot of expired driver's license. Invalid license is because they have tickets in, in a lot of municipalities, and they can't get their license renewed because they have all these outstanding citations, because they're.
And, and when I started, I wanna, I, I wanna welcome this many questions you give me, because I can better answer some questions, but when I said consistency, I talked about myself. What I see is by the volume of the court, that there's just absolutely the likelihood of. You know, if I said, I don't think we're gonna need you every month to come here and court, but when I say consistency, we're gonna have court. At the third Tuesday of every month, whether we have a docket or not, I'm gonna be here for walk-ins and people to talk to and to help Mary Alice. So what I'm gonna do is nine o'clock or trials, anything after nine o'clock is gonna be what's called show calls, people who had an agreement with the court that failed. And they just wanna come see me or plead to me or talk to me, whatever they wanna do, but that's it. Every, that every Tuesday I'm here. When we need, but we docket cases that he needs to be present for, um, then, then, of course, we'll give notice. And, and then again, as you saw, uh, the chief put on there, um, if I follow OCA standards, I have to have him here. Um, for a show call, so for trial, uh, with the, um. Oh, shoot, the, the, at the, uh, Judge McCurry at the past and where she got shot. That's the standard from OCA that require every municipal city, I mean, every municipal county, JP Court has to have a bailiff when they're in open court.
For Sarah.
I can't believe that.
Sarah, Sarah. I think it's good sir.
Good sir. Good sir. Y'all don't know about that, Chief, she was, uh, the defendant came to our house and shot her. Horrible, but, um, that's a requirement, so I, I do ask, and, and I've had two court hearings, but even on show calls days. Um, cause I'm here, it's, it's open court, I'm, I'm in the building, it's open court, and he's in. Over, so I much appreciate that. Okay, um, but please, y'all have questions for me? It's, again, it's a philosophy that's worked for me in four different courts and successful, and, and I run as lean as I can possibly get them. Just like I wanted Jared to know, I, I, I don't see a scenario that we can't slow whatever she's doing down to cross train. Um, I, I don't know Mary Alice very well, because I was always seeing Letty when I was here. Um, but if the most cities y'all size, double duties. So that's not odd for y'all to be sharing somebody with the utility clerk. And then, of course, the city, Sheriff Jared, you're the, the strongest, smartest one on, in, in the staff, so.
There's no doubt.
So if, if I have any pool, maybe we could hire her to do the courts, all the time.
She's still in school.
Um, again, thank y'all for the opportunity. I enjoy doing this. I, I enjoy going to smaller courts. I have a big, big court, too. I enjoy going to the smaller courts and see what I can do to help.
So we signed the MVBA contract very recently, I think.
Yeah.
They reached out.
Yes, I spoke to them today.
Okay.
And I think they tried to. They're gonna be contacting me. I don't think I've talked to them, but Mary Alice told me.
They came and talked and spoke with Mary Alice. Their IT is gonna wanna get with y'all's IT. That's why I told them today, he knew, he follows y'all, he did, that's why I got on the part, he thinks he needs to, they need to go on to the part. But he saw that, and he said, hey, I did go out there, and that's when he said, hey, we're gonna talk to their IT, and I said, hold up. They have contracted IT, so keep those conversations to them. So, because those are the calls for those conversations. But those are kind of the wish lists I had. Um, counsel, y'all come up with some questions. I'll make it up, I don't know. I'm kidding.
So on the last three months, you've been here a day a month.
Uh.
Two days.
Two days.
Two days a month.
But I think we were paying you for one or two or?
They caught, they, this court needs one day a month.
Yeah.
Um, but when, with that being said, this is why somebody was asking, I don't do that, because. Um, I usually correspond with the court probably two to three to four hours during the week, too, through emails and phone calls and, and things like that.
So how many days a month going into the future, or would you desire to accomplish your task?
I, I still feel, let me give you some perspective. Uh, the city of Kyle Ruth is upwards, their last census sixty seven thousand, they're upwards of eighty two plus thousand. And I do, um, four days a month there, half days. I've taken it upon myself, my contract is for four days a month, half days. I choose, I'm big on consistency, so I usually stay the whole day. Uh, on those, on, on trial days over there, just to keep consistency in the court. Uh, when there's a fifth day, a fifth day in the month, I just, I just go, because I don't want some citizen to say. Like I knew it was the fifth day of the month and he's only here four days of the month, so I just run on through. So that's, that's how much time they need, and we, I don't, we haven't added staff in seven, seven years.
In Kyle, really?
To the court.
Wow.
It's a big city.
It's a big city, but we haven't, I haven't needed court staff. Addition court staff is just the way I run the court. That is, again, we don't want citizens coming in, uh, because we don't love them, but we, if we can do it online, or we can take care of them. Via email or, or some other way, I don't wanna inconvenience them. Also don't want hostility, and I don't want volatility in the court with staff. The best way to do that is on the phone, Chrome.
So it's kind of my understanding when someone comes in, um, they have to plead. And then usually what they're doing is, uh, a lot of times is asking, they don't want it to go on their insurance. So they're asking for, um, driver safety or something.
And that's something, um, with me, I brought a whole lot of, of, of things called standing orders. And I've done that, it keeps me, it keeps them happy, where I allow the clerk to, the clerk will accept a plea, and then what I've done is I've said, please. I've allowed them to sign, to accept them for defensive driving. I've allowed them to do deferments.
Deferments.
As, as, you know, Dwayne will know, a deferment, the city gets more. It's not about always the money, but it makes sense. If I'm gonna defer you, the city gets all of the fine, where if I, if you pay your fine, if you have a hundred dollars. Sixty five percent of that hundred dollars goes to the state of Texas. The balance, even on the fine, because it's court costs, the balance of that fine, you have to split that part two to the state. When I defer it, the city keeps the entire amount. The POPO doesn't always like it. Oh, man, this little bitch got off, he didn't, got a conviction. It's a deferment. He got the ticket, he was accountable for it, but it also only got dismissed. So. Yeah, he got it. But the account, the city keep more of the, keeps the whole fines, that's split in the state.
So the turp, the ferment would be like defensive driving.
No, deferment is go three months without another ticket, you know, you're fine.
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah, I, I, and if the ticket's two hundred dollars, most courts will double the, the amount, two hundred, you ain't pay for it, I don't do that. I don't wanna punish people because of broke. So what I do is, I, I usually, if they're indigent, I'll waive the deferral fee. I hardly ever charge a deferral fee. That, it's in addition to the fine. But, um, so usually it's just a fine.
So one day a month in the future?
Yes, sir, but I, I don't like staying hard past that. If they, y'all ever need me, I'll come up there each time, I don't care. I don't, I was gonna do Zoom. I'm willing to learn, I don't like. I only know how, I mean, if somebody hooks it up for me and gets me on there, but when, during COVID, we had juries and, and trials. And I had my clerks doing the rooms, putting people in rooms and stuff, and I don't wanna do that. So, I mean, but if you, if we have a citizen here that can't make it, I'll, I'll zoom, zoom, zoom. But I'm not gonna do trials and stuff like that and say.
Question for you, Judge. So the standing orders on deferments, um, defensive driving. No, that's at the discretion of the, the clerks.
I have quite a few. I've, uh, I allow them to do payment plans. I allow them to start a payment plan with no money down. That was not happening. I, I don't wanna, if, if, if you walk in here, or they had mental, if I walk in here and you send me away, I'm never coming back.
Yeah.
So I try to, I want, I want them to get the people and, and not get something out of them, get a commitment in front of them. Um, there's two reasons for that. There's the nice side, because of, of, because I don't have any, as far as I've got, three dollars a week. The other side of that is, I need to plead, because I can have them arrested if they don't come back. So I need those pleas is what I need from them.
So in terms of the duties of the, uh, combined clerks. In addition to simply accepting payments, they're making determinations of whether someone should or could be on a payment plan or. Um, what's, what's their scope of?
Anybody can be on a payment plan, and I know you're doing this, Jared, and I apologize. Um, yes, um, a great scenario is that each department has their own clerks. It's just not, well, it's not, it's too expensive in a small place like this. But the court is unique, and it has unique challenges that's very intricate when you're running a court effectively and, right? A lot of them is pleads. I mean, we're lucky enough that, that it's a municipal court, you don't have civil side of it, you do have ordinances. But, um, um, yes, there's quite a bit of discretion that the, the clerk's gonna have to inherit for that position. And I apologize, the young lady, I always get her on hardly, she's very nice.
Donna.
Okay, um, um, how does she feel about this?
She's nervous about the legalness of it.
There's nothing that we can't fix. The only thing we can't fix is if we push on and you don't know the wrong person. Everything else is fixable. There's none we can't fix, so I'll, I'll meet with her too.
Um, yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
That'd be good. She's a smart lady, so.
Yeah, I like, she's super nice.
Super nice, she's a smart lady.
That's okay, not so much, I don't know, but this lady was thrilled, we're not, but.
I want, I wanna make sure that.
It's a very, very common practice. And early in my career, I did, this, I was, I was a municipal prosecutor. This is a very, very common thing. Essentially, what you can't have is, say, there's a scenario where someone's twenty five over. There's, they, they need to see the judge when they did that, or, or alternatively, uh, if, if, uh, someone has a C D L.
You know, and I apologize, right, all the standing orders, and you're hitting on every one of them, they're all in writing, I have them.
But, but I mean, uh, uh, other, other than that, I, I mean, and look, this is, it's, it's great in terms of cost saving, because. If I don't come to the, to Martinville record, the city's paying me an hourly rate. And so if the math equation you're doing is, okay, well, if you've got twenty cases on the dock, you can resolve, you're gonna bring in more money than you paid me to do it. Having a standing order that, that allows a clerk to dispose of a case with a standard offer. Is not only allowable, it's an excellent cost-saving measure.
We're trying to keep, but, uh.
Pleading, are, are, do pleadings, do those have to be made in person?
Only at juvenile.
Only juvenile, and if otherwise they're taking the clerks, our clerks will be taking it over the phone or online, or do you have a preference?
Anyway, they can come personally, please, they can, they can't plead online, I need something in writing. So they can say, hey, I wanna send a plea. They can email it, text it, anyway we get that plea, but it has to be in writing and, and. Yeah, I'm not pointing, I know the fellow that was here, but they, they were taking payments without pleas. They have a plea, because they have to, in writing, waive their right to a jury.
Okay. Um. I think that was the last thing I had, so. Let me. How best do. Put you in a position to train these clerks on the standing orders, because I, I. I'm sensing a little bit of an intimidation factor that probably doesn't need to be there just because it's unfamiliar. Yeah, what, what can we do, uh, uh, for you to participate in that cross-training event so that you can.
What I'll do is.
Away any fairs.
And I apologize, I'm about to, um, I'll just carry on the next three months, and I'll, I'll schedule more weeks with y'all until they feel comfortable.
It might be varying days.
Oh, oh.
I've only met her once, because it was always Letty here on Tuesday.
She's getting more and more comfortable.
She's changing eager, um, knowing that she doesn't wanna do more than two days, I, I don't wanna hold down, but.
Well, three, she said three, and then, but in the summer, she'd like to cut it back.
Well, let me do this, I, um, again, it's the council, because my, my probation period is up. Um, we, the, I guess we speak, I don't know if this is supposed to be a different kind of session.
Well, this, this is a, we're.
We're gonna roll into the, uh, new business, and so you're the first one.
I don't feel you. I, uh, uh, the rate that y'all have left me at was the one day, and I agreed to have two days a month. And I'll just get there because of what's transpired. Um, my expectations are very high. Um, it's not undoable. I mean, it's, it's doable, it's doable. Um, but they're, if they're under another amount of stress, I better get over here and sit with them.
Well, and I'm very pleased, and I think Jared is also about the consistency and getting the court up. Up to date and everything, working on these.
And I like to say that and, and, and be kumbaya, but it's, it's probably not take some financial commitment when we go to expand the software. The cop sync give that, if y'all fulfill that.
Yeah.
This place can still run fine without all that, but that's a pie and scamp and stuff that would make it be very efficient. Um, but accountability and consistency is, and, you know, I don't. I've never had a counsel talk to me about money, and thank goodness y'all never mentioned it, but accountability and consistency. You owe money to the court, you gotta pay it, or there's no funds for that. You can't just blow us off.
Well, and I think the main thing too is like the chief said, if somebody comes through and they get a ticket, they don't pay it, then they stop them again. And if. And if they just kind of blow it off, it's like, well, well, he, nothing happens the first time.
Faster than, than, what's that, those fires? Somebody finds out that there's no accountability in the court and that, they don't do anything, that spreads very fast.
So if we start holding them accountable, they're gonna think twice about speeding through here.
What I propose are avenues that don't cost the city money. Uh, you utilize an OmniBase to its fullest, utilize a McCray to its fullest. Those are the things that don't cost the city any money. So.
OmniBase and what was the second one?
McCray. Uh, I call him McCray.
Oh, yeah. The, yeah. The collection agency.
I do write checks to OmniBase though.
Yes, um, they will, um, you, when they, there's a fee that they charge that we charge is in the fine. When you say don't pay them, that's a fee that we collect for them that we split. We get like two, three dollars of it and I don't know what the breakdown is.
Uh, I mean, the checks are usually fifty bucks or something.
Yes. It's thirty dollars. There's a hole on your license and you gotta pay that hole to get it off. So the city gets ten and you get twenty, something weird like that. So their service is, um, yeah, there, there's a fee that we collect and we have to reimburse.
But we, we can, we get money back too. For stuff that you do, or who, what is it? There's some Lexus Nexus thing. We get checks for six dollars all the time.
Oh, those are for reports, for, for reports about, I fill, I help and reference requests.
Oh.
Yeah. Now, and again, I apologize. Has the city ever had a collection agency?
No.
No. Okay. And, and again, they hastened me. They're not miracle workers. But now you're talking about a law firm that consistently is working and they have skip tracing abilities that we don't have, that law enforcement doesn't have. And in fact, trying to find these people and trying to get them to come in. And again, what I'm gonna utilize them for is different than where I use it in Kyle. I don't utilize them that way in Kyle. I have them try to get them to the court and then we negotiate. They have four, four clerks. So here, I'm gonna let them do all that work since this, they're gonna do all that work. They're gonna do payment plans. They're gonna, and it wasn't set payment plans, not to somebody who's not, uh, the only payment plans they're gonna be, are people on default. Our citizens here that wanna come pay twenty dollars a month, then Mary Alice is gonna do those. But if they go into default, then they get sent to, just like unfortunately a credit card, they get sent to collection and a whole different company starts bidding. And then he gets paid to the city.
I could. So you mentioned coming continuing for another while, coming in two times a month instead of the.
I need to re, I need to check in on my schedule because I'm already setting cases. So I will manipulate it to where I come two more times a month.
Well, we still, we still have to figure out our payment system. Um, getting the, getting the payment platform set up to work with the court. Ideally, once, once that's up, I would love to, you know, use the term, you know, s- have a scrum day or week or a couple of days, um, where we sit down and do the full, the full Monty of the, of the training. It's how do we do payments on the system now? How do I, um, take payments or refer payments on the phone? If someone wants to do a deferred payment plan, what, how am I processing that electronically? You know, for the clerks, do they have a form that they send to the, um, defendant, an email or is it something that's done online with a, you know, a DocuSign? Do we need to sign up for like DocuSign or something like that? So.
It can be simpler than that, but I know where you're going.
I do, I just wanna, I don't want to be in a place where we're doing drive-by training. And I trained you yesterday. Now you're at the desk on today and you get the phone call. I'm like, oh shoot, you know.
Can I throw out a couple of questions? Right now, besides coming and paying, I've heard Letty, do they, or how, do they pay over the phone?
There's a credit card system that they can enter on through their computer to take payment.
And y'all, this is for utilities also that y'all are employing this person for, this company. Wonderful. Okay.
And, and building permits. So they click on whatever they need to pay.
And, and yes, ours has to have some special language if you're gonna pay the fine, because you have to, you have to say by paying this fine, I plead no contest and waive my right to a jury trial. You have to say those words or litigation happens. Um, has, has there been an influx in, an increase in fees and cost? I mean, court?
Well, uh, uh, earlier I said that it's on plan. I don't know if it's more than last year or not, but it's what we expected.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm, the dollar figures have, per ticket has changed.
Yeah, I, I don't know. The, the only inference I give to that is that we have issued a lot of warrants. Um, but those are just pieces of paper sitting on this desk unless you do something with them. If you have to send them to collection, if you have to send them mail out, you have to do whatever. They're, they're, they're just paper, just warrants. They don't, they don't do anything unless somebody's working.
Well, if we were gonna schedule a court training week, doesn't have to be all five days, but we set apart. Dwayne and I and the staff, we figure out how to make the, uh, online payment system work. Maybe acknowledge button, that that's part of that procedure. Once that's in place, how much lead time in advance do you need to help calendar that training? Is it like a month out?
Over me to sit in with it?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, I can make it happen. Um, what I want y'all to know, I don't know anything about encode. That's why losing Letty, I don't know how much Mary Alice knows, but I mean, I'm not familiar with the software. I think the mayor said about reports and this and that. I said, you know, the clerks are better off, people are considering that they're here every day. Um, so.
So maybe we reach out to encode then and have it encode.
You wanna show them how it works with y'alls, uh, whoever this payment receiver is.
And so maybe they have pride in training for a fee or something for seven hours.
By the time.
Um, in terms of like the standing orders and court procedures and what, what your requirements are for their processing of cases. I wanna make sure we're, especially in the case where we have clerks who are fairly new to the job or pretty intimidated by the job, that they have a level of comfortability in the job that they're after reform. But to the point where we're role-playing in a conference room. Hi, I'm Suzie. I need to pay a ticket.
And, um, again, this, this, uh, I don't know, it sounds exciting to y'all, but I love this industry and it can be fun. It doesn't have to be scary. And it's, it's rewarding when you help people and get their stuff taken care of. But that's the, that's how I want the clerks to take the position. I wanna be excited and happy about being here. I know that sounds silly sometimes, but there's no reason that this can't be a fun job for clerks because it's, it's, it's interesting, really. So.
Never.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
What's the best way for me to reach out to you? Text message, call you?
Text, I text. But I mean, just for them, um, yeah, let me get back over here. Again, I, I, this is new to me. I didn't know that there was some angst about being cross-trained.
Um, it's kind, it's kind of bubbled up.
First name was Letty and now it's Donna.
Well, I knew it was Letty, but I'm, I'm, and again, if they're watching, maybe, maybe Letty told her that that wasn't a great idea. I don't know. It doesn't matter if it's a great idea. It's what y'all wanted to do.
Yeah, that's true. Well, should we move into?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for not doing online, uh, Zoom courts anymore than you absolutely have. Because I've seen terrifying videos of like where the judge has a hat head. We don't need that.
That made it.
We don't need that.
I, I'm always open to it if someone, if, if somebody is from, from, uh, Dallas, they got a ticket in Dallas. I'm gonna expect them to come here and if they give the court a reason that they can't, then I'll allow them. I mean, I can't not allow them if they can't get here. But most of those cases where you can't go, I call them, but, but those, very few cases will go to fruition. But if they do and they have to do Zoom, I'll do it. I don't care. And I don't like it.
I, I can't even remember the last time we had a trial. We, I think we've only had two.
Cause I've, I've, I've moved a lot of cases back.
You could go across the street to the courtroom. That would be so fun.
No, I, I know. It's a movie set.
It would be awesome.
For nineteen twenty-three.
We'll all come and sit in that little.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be perfect.
Okay, so let's, let's move on to three point one. Uh, so I need a, um, a motion to, to direct the staff to enter a contract with Judge Cable.
At, at, at the set compensation, he said it was twelve fifty. Um, that just needs to be confirmed in the motion.
Okay.
If, or modify.
So I'm waiting for someone.
Well, how, how long? How, how long are we talking about this?
It can be one or two years. It's set under, under the government code.
Which is what?
It's, it's a term to rent concurrent to that of the mayor. And so when you got a bank and see, then, then it runs to the, to the natural end of that.
So it would only be until May currently because that's when we have a new mayor coming in May.
Or could you make the motion for through this next cycle?
I, I mean, look, so the, the way, the way it normally works is you appoint, there's the, the reason, the, the reason that you don't have terms for this, you can give someone a preliminary shot to, to see if things work out well. But when you appoint, uh, when you appoint municipal officers, Jared, Dana, I do myself, Tommy, we're not employees and you, a, a new council could conceivably come in and say, we don't like the job you're doing, we're going to remove you. And they have the absolute statutory right to remove any of the officers, even if there is a contract in place, because that's, that's what councils get to do. So, I mean, he, his term will naturally roll over into another term. It's, it's not like he'll vanish and his, his status as municipal judge will vanish. But if there's a new council in a few months that wants to reevaluate any of the officers or all of the officers, they get to do so.
They can. They don't have to.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I have a, I have a copy of Kyle that, and, uh, it sounds like I'm bragging. I didn't realize. They tried to assign me to a body. I said, I said, oh, thank you. I said, you can't do that.
Oh.
I said, you got it, you too. But, and again, that contract ran, I've been in there thirteen, fourteen years, that contract. Um, I mean, every once in a while, we'll have to re-sign it.
I think it automatically renews if, if it's not.
Low language in it. And again, I know, but if, if y'all were to hire me and Bud wants to write it, then he can look at this one if he wants to. I mean, it did obviously differ from the salaries and the days of the department.
Well, I'll make a motion and is the motion to accept the municipal judge contract? That's it? Or to direct the staff to write the contract? To direct the staff to write the contract?
Setting, setting a compensation at twelve fifty, one thousand two hundred and fifty.
Compensation at twelve.
Here, here's, here's what.
Great, Jared, you did a great job. I love it.
I appreciate you doing it. Yeah. I was waiting on that.
It's teamwork, teamwork.
Mary, if, if someone asks me what motion should be, I, I would, I would make a motion to appoint Judge Cable as the full-time municipal judge for the compensation set at twelve fifty a month. And.
What he said?
A contract files.
Okay. I make a motion to appoint Judge Cable for a full-time position at twelve fifty a month.
As a municipal judge.
As the municipal judge for, for Martinelle, Texas.
Oh, and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Matthew, second. So I have a, a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion or any more questions?
So we don't have to set a timeframe on this now. It's open-ended then basically.
Well, it runs concurrent with the mayor according to ordinance. And so like, like Jared said, in a couple of months, if the next mayor wanted to have a different judge, they could do that.
The, the terms of appointment are governed by the statute.
In Councilman Plutton, the, the contract reads that even if it is a two-year, both parties could end it after a thirty-day notice. So it's kinda strange. That's what mine, mine says. Either party can end it after forty days.
Okay.
And you could try to hold out within your contract, but usually if there's that kind of problem going on, neither party, they part way. That's what the contract stands for that. But I, it's kinda weird that they even put times on it when you can, you can cancel a contract personally.
So did, did we say concurrent with the mayor or what?
Well, that, that's, I mean, that, that's built in, I mean, I guess not to get too technical, but there, there's this idea, or this, this theory in the law that you, you can't have contracts that violate public policy. And a contract that violates public policy is a contract that contradicts the law. And, and in this case, i- if you, if you look at the standard for municipal offers, officers, you're gonna go to the local government code for everyone here except Judge Cable or for Judge Cable, the government code. And it laid out that, that the terms, uh, 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 of the appointment, the terms of the position, the general duties that relate to that position, it, it's all set forth in the law. That's the idea of a general law municipality is the, the, the legislature created that the mechanism for granting these cities, it created the, the governing structure, it created the positions you gotta have. And so it's, it's all laid out there. And really the only thing to decide when you hire a municipal municipal judge is what are you gonna pay them? Uh, and, and other than that, the, the law provides the route.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, y'all. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Like I said.
So once again.
And I'll get with, uh, I didn't know if you wanted that or not, just, uh, uh, uh.
No.
Out mine. Um, I'll, uh, but I'll get with Mary Alice. I'll call her tomorrow and set up some more times. We'll, we'll keep the.
We're not here tomorrow.
What?
Yeah, we don't work on Fridays. Just Monday through Thursday.
Okay. And then I'll set up and I'll just do three more months and two, you tie one month. But we're close two days next week because of the weather. I just trust consistency, y'all. So I understand and I appreciate that.
Holy God.
Did you get to my mom no before Tuesday?
Right, right. I wrote it.
Quick and un.
Oh, I hear you're talking to, he's talking to you.
Do you, uh, do you happen to have this in word version? So I don't have to retype this?
I don't know.
It's not, it's in our.
I don't know what that means.
It's in our staff. It's awful.
I could scan it in. Does that mean anything?
No, you can't, you can't edit it unless it's.
Yes, you can.
I'm sorry. I'm fifty-six years old and I don't wanna work.
We have a PDF converter.
You would've been a big lot of us. Hey, I just downloaded the scan function on my twenty, my, I have thirteen phone.
Wow. Good job.
I wanna use it.
You just hold over like a camera.
The new one.
And it'll outline it for you. And then you have a button. Then it saves it on your phone. It, cause it, it doesn't, it, it doesn't look good. It looks like, it looks like your countertop or whatever.
All right. First of all, I'm glad I get it.
Thank you.
My mother did, she, like I said, my mother did twenty-four years on the city council. I know what it's like to stay for two, five.
Oh, no. Thank you.
No, oh, that's, uh, she started getting paid for it then. Uh. Thanks, Judge.
Okay, so we'll move on to three point two. Um, in the packet is this, uh, from Apex. It's a, it's a quote for fixing the surge panels. And I asked Pete to stay in case there's any more questions.
I'll, I'll give a, but some background on this. So Massam this station went out, uh, October timeframe, somewhere around there. Um, the cause of that was a power surge and it burnt out components. And the, uh, we're afraid that actually burned out the motor of one of the pumps, basically the road to pump. We don't have any power surge protection on our devices. And so any spike in current goes all the way through our system and fried components. So, um, one of the things that's gonna be done on the Crockett, those stations, surge protection when we put on, but that's not under that grant. Separate from that grant, when you get on some of these other systems. So, uh, he went out, asked for some quotes, got one to put surge protection on our panels. As I read the quote, in order to put a search protection system, they have to reconfigure some things, basically replace some panel components and design of it in order for it to be compatible with the search protection device that they can install. And that's the quote that, that we have here. What it's intended to do is protect our, our systems from more power spikes.
Will our grant cover that?
No, not this one. Not on Madison. It covers it on Crockett. And so also, I, I just had a question on the equipment rental. Where does this search protection go?
The electrical system of the.
So it's underground or?
It's above ground.
It's above ground?
Yes.
So why, what's the equipment rental? Do you have any idea? So why, what's the equipment rental, do you have any idea? I mean, it's thirteen.
Would they need to rent?
Yeah, thirteen hundred dollars.
Right there, the bottom line.
That's a great question, equipment rental.
I saw that too, Mayor, I'm like, what is that?
What, I didn't know if it went way down deep in the ground or something?
I would think maybe, uh, print it, maybe print some conduit, or conduit, like the paint pen. That's what I'm thinking.
Is this which kind of thing?
Should we get clarification on that?
Yeah.
I mean, how much, how much of emergency is this?
It's something that needs to be done, because if you get another spike, we're gonna blow a lot of money.
So if it, what council might want to do is approve the quote, subject to modification to remove the equipment rental.
I mean, there's, we just don't know why it's on there, that doesn't mean it's not necessary, you know? Do I, do I, do I, like, not knowing what it is, no.
I didn't say what it was.
I guess I should have called him, I was thinking that you would know.
Be a good idea, no, I mean, I, because that's, they're just words, really.
So absolutely make them.
But but in my mind, I think it's probably like conduit or taking a fair amount of conduit, or take take a ditch to bury some pipe, electrical pipe, something back to the. From the main panel, but from the pole back to the main panel.
I can guess what you're talking about.
Oh.
Yeah, it's kind of expensive to rent an equipment. Where is this panel right now? There, the, yeah, but is it, is it in the pumps station?
Well, they have to, they have to disconnect and then they have a a main panel.
So, um, when you walk in, so the.
This is which one?
Madison, Madison, over by the fire.
Walk in, it's a fenced off area, and the center is where the, you know. My mind, I think of it like ICBM turret silos, it's a deep hole with the pumps in there. And then right next to the holes are, um, about, you know, five, six feet high, a little box with a door, and behind the doors, all the electrical systems. I'm not sure where on this thing would be, but in my mind, all the electrical service is accessible from standing height or. I don't know, small step ladder, I don't see any need for like a man bucket kind of deal or.
Well, it says there, it says requires equipment rental off-road boom lift.
Should we get more quotes, should we maybe get another quote and get clarification? And then you get a quote on this other thing that we need and then come back? Because it it's not like we have to have it right now, we could, we could wait.
Equipment rental for off-road boom.
That's wild, that was probably what it's referred to, but I can't imagine why.
Why would they do a boom lift?
Yeah.
I think, uh, it told me that we're gonna have to replace the upgrade, the that disconnect on the on the pole outside the pit.
Can they touch the poles?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It has to be.
He said it was a bit of a code, I guess, to install the the search protection, so they have to replace that panel there.
Panel on the pole or the panel for the controls?
On the pole.
Oh, okay, then I, what I said was completely wrong.
Right, and there's an off-road boom.
Yeah, that's why you have.
So, so if you got that, okay, that's. I guess clarification.
Or everything I said, I was clearly wrong.
Why do you need a boom lift?
He said they have to take it all the way up to where the service starts on the pole.
I don't know, they're gonna, they're gonna replace the whole thing, but.
What thing?
But they need a boom lift, then, yep.
Where does it go, I don't, I'm not.
It's going, bringing it all the way down. Yeah, it's a meter loop, there you go, you go, then you bring your. Then you have to go to the top of the pole, complete the circuit. Yeah. Because they're gonna replace the the shut-off, the the quick disconnect, which is on the pole. Back into the. You have to do the whole loop. And so they gotta back up.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, you knew that, right? I knew that.
Yeah, remember he said.
I know that, but I didn't see where, why they were doing that, you know?
I'd rather not make a motion about this at this time, there's a couple of unknowns here, and as the mayor said, if we could get another quote or get the quote on the other item of necessity, then.
The runtime clock? It sounds like that's more crucial at the moment.
It is, it is, and, uh, like this, like this thing here, it's, you don't do it like today or tomorrow.
So this, this is not really, is this very critical?
Well, it needs to be done.
It needs to be done, very.
I mean, can we wait till next week or?
You don't get another quote in a week.
Right now, we don't have search protection, right?
Right, we don't have search.
So is the motor in jeopardy because we have search protection? You understand, so the, if there's no search protection and the motor gets a spike.
That's a big bug.
Then we have a three, three times this potential cost.
Like in this storm, we could get a search.
What, if you don't have search protection, and these are all, this is all old electric, I mean, that thing's been there since, uh, two thousand seven. It's been there a while.
Well, we're also at the end of the line with customers, they have brownouts.
You get brownouts there, right?
Yeah.
Do you remember our last winter storm, we?
Yeah, we just had one, the neighbor across the street.
We had brownouts, remember, a couple of years ago?
Twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, bad, uh.
You know, we're getting, we're getting, uh, the power company's been out in the last year twice on our street. Where the transformers are gone.
Yeah.
So it was across the street, the blue house across the street went, and then, um, our neighbor, the one down next to us went. Uh, the year, that was a year ago, a year, about fifteen months ago. So that's what, that's what they keep worrying about, you get a spike, and that's what, that's what we looked the first time.
We're having a storm come up.
The Crockett Lift Station, all the electrical work that's being done at Crockett Lift Station, I'd say probably about half of it. Is because of prior squirrels and other things. Uh, frying the automatic transfer switches and other electrical components.
Pete, I guess you don't know this answer, but if we say approve this, when could they do the work?
They probably have to schedule it, I guess.
Yeah, I'd have to sign it and send it.
So it might happen next week?
Yeah, yeah, probably. It gets on their work note too, they got other jobs too.
I mean, if you feel good with this quote, then we can go ahead with it, but if there's questions that you want us to answer.
I'd just like to know the clarification, is that, is that equipment rental, is that the boom lift?
Oh, yes.
That's what they're saying, yeah, that has, that has to be it, huh? Okay, well. Man.
If it tells you right here, that whole paragraph, but they're gonna remove. So if someone wants to, what, why, why, why didn't just a motion to accept subject to deletion of the boom lift, if you can verify it's not needed? You can have a conversation with them.
Oh, yeah.
And you could, you could do it both ways. I can ask them tomorrow, remember, then I'll send you an email or.
Sounds like it's needed, I don't know that we're reading it.
They gotta find it.
Yeah.
What are you doing, so, Derek?
I wasn't there when they did the the quote, but as we've kind of deconstructed the conversation, it it seems valid to me.
It seems valid?
But. You know, that, I don't have a warm and fuzzy on it, but it's something that needs to be done, it seems reasonable. I'm good enough to to guess at it as long as you're, someone's there overseeing it.
Does anyone want another quote they can get?
Well, today is the twenty ninth, it said it was good for thirty days, I mean, I'd have to get it signed and sent back in tomorrow. If 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 the council approves it.
I don't know.
Well, you're the expert on this, maybe.
I'm not an expert.
Okay, in comparison to me?
Okay. I'm knowledgeable, let's not say excellent. You're an electrician? I'm not knowledgeable, more knowledge, I will go with that, you're probably more knowledge. But, uh.
Because replace existing panel in the existing location assumes all wiring is suitable for reuse.
No squirrel damage. That's basically what Jared was saying, no squirrel damage.
Yeah.
Is this quote for just one of them or for all?
No, this is just for the Madison.
Want another quote from another company and get.
What is the consensus?
That we don't know.
I'd rather just get it done.
Okay, make a motion.
I make a motion and we approve this vote for the repairs at the Madison Lift Station. The vote being a total five thousand seventy-four dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second. Oh, you're so fast, go ahead, Terry, you seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion?
I think in the future, if we're gonna spend this much, I I would like to see more than one, one quote.
I agree.
Good idea.
That spending five thousand dollars and just having one quote, I I don't really like that, but.
I I honestly, I think this is right in line, things like that.
Okay.
But that's a good point.
But that, but I agree with you one hundred percent.
Good point, Mr. Blaine.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so.
I'm opposed.
Oh, one opposed.
One opposed.
Okay, the motion does carry. Okay, so we will move on to the next item. So, did you want to keep, I've got another topic.
Thank you.
Um. We need to move the, or remove the trees between the ponds. So, um, what I'm talking about is about its treatment plant, there's three ponds, if you've ever been out there, and the four ponds?
Yeah.
I thought there's three.
Three.
Yeah, and so it's two rows. And it's a lot of water, and the water feeds the trees and they're always growing. And so there's a lot of discussion about how to do it. And it's, the ponds go down rather quickly, and so it's a lot of work to mow that grass in between. And to remove all those trees. So, uh, Mr. Robert Booker is here tonight, he has given us a quote of approximately four thousand dollars. Um, to get that done for us. Now, I did look at the grant that we're, we just got bids for, um, we'll be talking about that, we accepted a. Or we're going to admit, uh, accept a bid later in the meeting for the grant. So I clarified with Gary Freeland that in the grant, the trees that are to be removed are in the irrigation section. Of the, of the forty acres, so it's not between the ponds, unfortunately.
The grant won't cover it.
So the grant does not cover that, and it's something that has to be done, because as the trees grow, they get their roots and everything into the liners. And then our treatment system wouldn't be effective.
I just asked a question, the liner is natural clay? So there's no, that, they didn't bring clay in?
It's all clay, the ponds are all.
So if we, I heard talk about pulling the tree or cutting the tree, what's the problem with pulling the tree?
Because you'll pull the, you'll pull the the roots out of the ground and you'll tear it.
You'll tell the clay, you'll tell the clay, you'll have multiple leakage on the side.
And so how many trees are we talking about, Ralph?
Didn't you say about eighty?
I mean, there's, I mean, if you take them all the way down to like, you know, one inch diameters, it's, at some, at points, it turns into just jungle brush, cutting through it.
Is there any way to put Aqua Master on those cuts and 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 kill them, I mean, Aqua Master is allowed in in water?
Yeah, I mean, it's like a killer, that's what I used to, I had the best.
Just poison them?
I used to skin the tree and get a little paintbrush, whatever, and then.
You mean skin, you mean cut or?
So just a, you know, a harp, a harp on the tree.
Oh, just skin and then put the poison in and then they. We're, so we're, we're talking about cutting all the trees, right?
Yeah, and after they're ready.
But you can't paint any herbicide.
What would you put on them, Mr. Booker?
I would go and put remedy.
Remedy?
Cut it.
Yes.
And then paint remedy on it, the wound.
On the wound?
And then haul the tree down. And burn. It'll go, it'll go right into the root system of the tree, but that's ongoing, man, so that's something you're gonna get fixed over time.
Well, we cut it, we'll put the remedy.
You know, they start to come back up when they're small, that's when, that's when you gotta attack.
So we're gonna cut anything, anything from an inch diameter.
To the four inch, inch, to whatever you want of it.
Trees aren't there mostly.
Water, water windows, I think, little, little, it's been, it's got a oak tree going up there, cypress, a lot of cypress.
Oh, really, that's a shame, lose a cypress. Get cypress.
Help our free ward. Help the free ward upon the wall.
Do we, do we have, we had any paperwork on this?
Yes. Oh, do you have it for the screen?
Yeah. That's, uh, the next one, I think. Yeah, so that's the explanation as to how they're gonna get it done. Um, agree to cut trees and close to the water or ground to remove, then treat. Cut with remedy instead of pulling them by the roots, which may cause liner damage and leakage. Um, and attach is the quote, and this one right here. Another.
They're thinking it will take two days to get this done.
People, they don't know how long it's gonna take, so my plan is like I did when I shredded, I shredded over there once, my name's Robert Booker. My proposal there. Um, I don't really know how long it's gonna take, I don't think it's gonna take more than a day. So my idea is go in there and we get the first day done, we can probably tell if we get it done the next day. We'll let you know that, we obviously won't go over sixteen hour without talking to you guys, so what, what are we gonna supply? We're gonna supply three guys, being two other guys, we're gonna supply a. Bobcat with a grapple to help move trees and stuff around, we're gonna have a excavator, a medium-sized excavator to reach out with a grapple. But a lot of these trees are gonna fall into the pond. Reach and gravel out of pond, we're gonna have a twenty-foot dump trailer, and also, my tractor's a, the boat is a bucket. To move the trees back and forth to a pile y'all have down there, where we can burn them later, and then the chainsaws, obviously. But we're gonna kind of be working in that water, we call that water. So I just don't know exactly if it's steep, it would have been easier just to pull them out with that grapple, my roots, that would have been sweet. I'm afraid it is gonna.
Yeah, it's probably.
That's what we'll be supplying.
Would that be, does this include cutting the grass on the steep sides also?
I'll have my, that's another service, but it, yes, we could do that, included in that grant. If we get those trees cut out, when we get that big shredder, I can, we can do that, that would be, I can add that.
Thank you, Mr. Booker.
Yeah. By the way, I live in the falls at Martindale, which is in Martindale's E T D, very, very bad.
And just to call it record, I know Mr. Booker, by the way.
And if we could get a handle on this before it starts growing again, that's why I'm asking for this right now.
But Pete, when's the last time, when's the last time this has been? When's the last time those trees have been cleared, or they ever been?
I think it was, uh, uh, what's his name?
Cody.
Cody, did he?
We've done it maybe last year even.
There's a last, or the summer before.
Summer before.
Summer before.
Before.
There's some tall trees.
So it was probably two years ago.
It's same thing, clear, cut it.
I don't know if he did the treatment though, I don't know if he did the remedy treatment.
And you, you think he didn't do it, so they grew back, we did, critically, we do the treatment to kill the trees.
You want to kill the root system.
Yeah.
So maybe it'll last a little bit longer, but we have to go.
Yeah, the paper that is gonna get on soon as this starts going.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I I've been through that.
You know that.
I guess the one thing to combat is remedy, I guess it's, just to bring in the, okay, you use it for some of this thing, dribble it down.
Ponds.
You agree with me?
Yeah, I use it.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Come on now, you do it.
No, no, he's your guy, you know?
No, 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 guy. Mike, make the vote.
You can do it, Mike.
No, make the vote, Mike, make the vote.
For them, probably.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the quote for the tree removal at the wastewater treatment plant front. Booker and son cattle company and ag services LP.
I was gonna, I was gonna second it.
I didn't say it yet.
But that's fine, I'll, I'll second it. Go on, Rick, I'll probably get, somebody will say something.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, is there any more discussion, any more questions?
I'd just let you know, I'm a fair weather worker, it's gonna be sixty degrees.
So it's not gonna be next Monday and Tuesday? Or next week, probably not.
I'm in February.
Yeah. Okay.
Kinda run across the river, you said you're fair weather.
Yeah, cowboys, fair weather.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Booker, for coming and being available, we appreciate that very much.
And I've also got welding services, rail fences. Big hole, I got hydraulic auger, the new fences.
How about digging real deep holes for park signs?
Pouring concrete in there.
Rebar.
Well, we gotta come up with plans.
We gotta come up with them. Since your fence, since your fence guy, Mr. Booker, do you have any suggestions for us to keep people from pulling off our fence, I mean, our park mobile signs?
Well, like, uh, butter sticks, it's kind of a fence, it's a blood gang.
Yeah, so gotta have the flood.
And then it's a great idea going over the top of the entrance.
Mm-hmm.
With a sign, with the planes you, you park it for me with. And then as far as the other signs inside the park. Do it, just a deep hole with cement, two, three inch pipe, pretty good. With the sign.
You think, uh, uh, T-posts in concrete?
Yeah, just two posts.
You think it would be beneficial to drive rebar into those, with the concrete, you know, drive rebar into the hole with the sign or the post and then pour?
I think the depth of the hole is more important. Give them at least two fifty, my hole goes three foot deep. And I'm gonna put soil over there, river soil, it's easy drill.
Very solid.
It's solid, it is.
How much do you rent your auger for?
With an operator.
Yeah, cause I think somebody probably have to operate it.
Yeah.
And I've seen sometimes drill holes, let's drill stem. Drill holes with the rebar, you know, through the pipe, when you set it into the hole, and it ain't going anywhere to do that. But that's a lot of extra.
If you go with T-posts.
Well, we'll meet with the chief and.
They're trying to argue, saying ink and glitter.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's gotta be the best idea, honestly.
The judge and the chief on it.
Well, I, I think a T-post, though, if somebody really wanted to slam their big truck into a T-post, they could knock it down.
Well, they could knock it down, too, they hit it hard.
I guess so, but a T-post.
But you're gonna ruin your truck.
But they can't jack them out, right? They can't jack them out.
Okay.
They could knock it down, but anyway.
Okay, we're gonna move on to three point four, and I turn this one over to Harvey.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll take it real quick.
Okay.
So, as, as we know, we received, um, since bringing back up, I think we presented to you early December, maybe late November. We, we put out a request for bids for online building permit software. Software where people can go online through a portal, fill out their building permit, pay their fee, and.
Thank you.
Um, maintains a electronic record of, of that permit. Using, using our native e-form systems that we have, there's City Plus and other. Um, receive bids, the two, um, most competitive companies, we invited to do a demonstration of their system. I believe some city council people, uh, participated. Um. My, I, I, my recommendation for city council is to go with the company Cloud Permit. Their.
But the first one or the second one?
First.
The second.
Second.
The first company was City Plus, the second one was Cloud Permit.
Yeah.
City Plus, just money wise, City Plus was charging six thousand.
It is about double.
Yeah, it's about double, about.
That's a no brainer.
Yeah.
Well, but, but yeah, but, but it is functional, the, the second one was, was, it does what we needed to do, and has options to do other things, too, so.
No, I like the user interface better on it.
Yeah.
Uh, it's gonna be more user friendly, I think.
You know more about that stuff than I do.
No.
So, um, the recommendation, um, for city council is to accept the, uh, proposed contract for Cloud Permit. Online building permit software system.
Can you refresh our memory what the cost of that is gonna be in?
Yeah, it's gonna be, the first year, including setup and subscription fees, it's gonna be four thousand, year two, three thousand one hundred twenty, and year three, three thousand two hundred forty-five.
So what's the breakdown of where the permit fees go to? Some go to Bureau Veritas, some go to us, or, or, I mean, how much do we make off these permits to? Recoup the four thousand that, uh, you're saying it costs?
So our.
Recoup that?
We don't directly charge a technology fee, or specifically account for that in our fees. Currently, as a light item. One of the projects that Adrian and I were working towards before he left was revamping our permit fee structures. To better comply with some recent, uh, statutory language regarding how we. Assess the cost of a building permit fee, so. I don't think we ever brought that back to city council with discreet recommendations. That might be something that we look at with this. It had to do with getting away from value based fees to, uh, their determinants of. Of what the fee will cost, and one of the, this came up in the Bureau Veritas contract because they still charge the city based off of values. And there was some differences in opinion. And it dives quite quickly into different legal opinions on whether, how that statute's interpreted. So we, at that point, is where we stopped. Right now, we don't, to say specifically, we won't collect a fee. Directly target this application when we go live with it. We may charge a fee later when we go live, or during the go-live process, because part of the initiation setup is to work through the workflows. And so, things like, uh, plan reviews, you know, preliminary plan reviews before a permit is issued. One of the workflows I wanna get into is for the plan review to set the fee of the bill. So you submit a plan review of, I don't know, twenty-five dollars for, you know, you know, small remodel jobs or whatever, we'll figure it out. Then, that plan review will set the fee based off the mater, based on the information sent in. So if it's a, a sixteen hundred square foot addition, well, then we can chart, we can work with Bureau Veritas on what's the. Charge gonna be to the city on that, and then base our fees based on that, and so each permit will have its own fee. Cause we're getting away from, let's say, ten percent or five percent, two percent, whatever the percentage was that we're saying. Oh, this is gonna add twenty thousand about, dollars of value, we collect a four hundred fee on that, well, no, it's, it's gotta be more.
I thought there was, yeah, they were, we were, what was that, the, looking to do legislation went in because there was too many cities just coming up with arbitrary. You know, fees for doing any permit, and they were saying that you had to pass through, but you could charge an admin fee.
Yeah.
But there's a cap on the percentage of that.
Yeah.
Talk about that, it's in that ten to twenty percent, there's a capping in there.
Right, and you can do admin, you can have administrative fee, and it should go towards the cost of providing that service, but.
The internal.
I think the, in the, the intent, looking at it from outsiders, I don't know, uh, the intent seemed to be to. Get cities away from. Charging, when you do a value based fee. A home build over here and a home build over here, just based on the furnishings and the fall in construction, going to change the value of those homes. Even though square footage or something is going to be the same.
Yeah.
They didn't want certain cities charging more because this home is doing, uh, a five hundred thousand dollar new build, and this one's doing a three hundred thousand dollar new build. And so that, there's more fees are taken off of that, making it more expensive to homeowners and stuff, so. Going towards like square footage based terminations of what, what.
Yeah, but, but there's still, there's still a methodology for us to add to those costs.
Yes, there is.
And we did not initiate that, because that's, we haven't, you, you presented that to council, but we did not.
We did not make any changes because.
Because the, the law basically forced us to go to, until you add this, right, am I correct? You have to pass something to, to add it. We, the council has to pass something in order to add them out.
Yeah, and we got in the, we're getting real deep in the weeds, but you have the situation of, well, if Bureau Veritas is determining that for the fee they charge the city. And the city contracts that fee, and then we add ten percent to it, Bureau Veritas fee. The city's complying. Because we're just doing the pass through. Even though Bureau Veritas on the backend is still using the valuation as the denominator for what they're doing.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the fact that they're doing the wrongs, I get you.
So we, we never, we never resolved that potential conflict because, well, we would tie up our attorney for a little bit.
To, to address what, what, what Mr. Clinton is saying, is.
This could be administrative, but.
We, we, we need to recoup this, I know the thousand dollars of this is the one time initiation. You know, to do the training, and then it's basically three thousand a month, a year, and then next year goes up five percent, and then goes up five percent every year, that's basically what it is, so it's three hundred dollars a year.
Hmm.
Um, but it, like, you know, I was dealing with some interaction with clients now, or the mayor is, they said something, now it, it, it's all in writing, it's clean, it's. You know, the, the clock has been reset properly, cause that's, to me, I think we've gotten into trouble collectively as an, as an organization engaging with the public with. Getting the, did we get the, did we get the form, and when does the clock start, and did the city respond?
Actually, it's been done very well.
Yeah, but you know, but just clarifies it, so it's, there's, there's no, you know, the human action, the interaction with the staff here comes out of what?
Well, yeah, that's the intent.
That's what happens, is actually, we follow the ordinances and, and get those things out within the specified time.
But you don't.
It's, it's the, it's the, really, the plan review stage is the most difficult part, because we're, we're asking folks to fill out a paper based thing, as. Available online, but they're turning it in in paper, and that, by the process alone, is engaging and con, and consuming staff time. To have those human interactions, not trying to make the city more impersonable to, to, to customer needs. But it's extremely inefficient, especially when the staff isn't trained or qualified to make the terminations on half the stuff that's going on. Unless it comes to like a zoning issue, so, um, even then, we can lev, leverage our contracted providers of Bureau Veritas by. Like my vision is, whatever goes into Cloud Permit is a copy and paste into the Bureau Veritas system until we can get an API that links those two systems where. We're completely automated out of the ballgame. And any interaction that those had is a Bureau Veritas inspector, plans reviewer, looking at this, making the judgment. And the, the software's facilitating that interchange.
Yeah, instead of us.
And even like, hey, I, I think I wanna do this, what's required? Submit a plans review and talk to a Bureau Veritas person. You know, instead of talking to Javier, the mayor, or myself, or Deanna, or, God forbid, Dwayne.
Some of the money.
Yeah. And then also, we have a hard time of, I've submitted my application, but when did you pay? Oh, I paid last week, I submitted this two, three months ago, why didn't you process it, why didn't you pay it? And then we have issues of, you know, deposits versus fees and.
Actually, when I get a permit application, I assign it a number, and then I send it to Bureau Veritas. And I don't charge a fee until I get that plan review back, and it's determined whether they can do what they want to do. So, once we get it worked out, um, with Bureau Veritas, what has to be done? And which ordinances can be followed, and sometimes they can't.
Yeah. I, I'm only saying this because I am concerned, because tonight, all we've really talked about is, is spending money. And that's all we're doing, is spending money, we haven't creatively talked about how can we make more money? Visit Martindale has fallen by the wayside completely, and we're coming up to the summer, and this concerns me, we have a lot of merchants here that are concerned because. Visit Martindale has done nothing, and I think we should start a new committee and start thinking immediately next month. How can we make more money for the city, spending our mo, hotel motel tax money to get the signage up, get the website going? That's all I hear, all that, I'm just saying.
And that, the hotel motel tax has nothing to do with.
It has to do with making money, all we've talked about tonight is spending money, we never talk about how can the city make more money? And we need to start to be talking about that, because Visit Martindale has completely fallen by, by the wayside. I come by here on a Saturday night and there's.
Martindale has nothing, this is building.
I'm, I'm talking now as a concern that we need to start making money, that's all I'm saying, because we're spending four thousand here, five thousand there, three thousand here. And none of us have started any dialogue about how this city can make more money, that's my point, that's all I'm saying, we need to.
Well, I think that's the point of the legislature, we're not here to make money, we're here to serve the public. And we have a wastewater treatment plant that has to be kept up, and we have a police department, so the money that we're spending is to actually serve the public.
We need to make more money, that's all I'm saying, we can make more money off our sales tax, if we, all I'm asking is, please, let's start to revisit the Visit Martindale before we get into the summer. Merchants want us to do that, and to provide accessibility to people on the highway to this town, they don't know it, we don't have any sites. We don't have a website, we've done nothing, we've been talking about this for years about a billboard.
Okay, you're get, you're off track.
Okay, I'm, I'm expressing a concern.
We're talking about building permits and a way to facilitate this, to make it better for staff.
I'm just saying, in the future, let's start talking about making money.
Okay, we'll have to do that on another meeting, cause it's not.
Saying, please, please.
It's not on the agenda right now.
I know, that's all I'm saying.
So if you have questions about this, this, um, service that we're talking about. To facilitate building permits, that's what we need to talk about.
Yeah, is there any more questions on the Cloud Permit contract?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion if, if council would like to do this, or.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the contract for building permit software, uh, through Cloud Permit.
I'll, I'll second that.
Mike finally gets to second it.
Finally get to second, though.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay, so we're gonna move on to three point five. Um, so we've had the same firm that has audited our books for several years now, and the cost has went up substantially. So we, uh, Dwayne and Harvey have been looking for a firm that would cost less money.
Yeah, so this, now I speak out of word, Ken, let me know. Um, my understanding is audit services fall under, the general got broad strokes of accounting, and accounting being a professional services. So the way that professional services contracts are done, you choose the best qualified, and then you proceed to negotiate contract price. And then you proceed to negotiate contract price. Um, we received two bids, both well qual- qualified, um, com- firms. Uh, one is larger than the other, um, does work with, uh. Several municipalities down in the San Antonio area, Selma and some of the others, but. Their procedure is very well detailed, looks great. The concern as I had was reading through their qualification statements is that they may have a difficulty. Um, relaying that level of sophistication to a city of our size. The other bid that we got was from a firm that's been doing government account, uh, audits only. For the last, I think, twenty years, the the CPAs who run the firm, experienced thirty-five years CPAs. And they specialize in doing audits of cities of a similar size of limited populations in the. You know, single-digit thousands, um, including you and, uh, right next door. So as I look through the two. Uh, qualification statements, they both look great. I would give that slight edge to the, uh. The other that specializes in our area. I think they'd be more tuned to the procedures and. Uh, budgetary controls that we have in place and be able to tailor their audit. Systems of more, they wouldn't have to tailor the audit systems to a city that is let as less.
What is the name of the two firms?
The first one is AVA, um, that's their acronym. I don't know if that's a, stands for something.
It's a name.
Armstrong.
Armstrong, yeah.
Yeah, and associates.
Armstrong something and associates, and then, um, the other firm that specializes in smaller municipalities is the Alman. Um, Dan, Donald Alman, uh, firm. So my recommendation for city council and if Dwayne's happy to to jump in on this and provide his. His input, but we talked about it, so.
What, what was the price?
Yeah, the product, what's the price?
So that's, that's the reason why.
Oh, you can't say.
You can't say that.
You have to pick the best for.
It's a bit the best qualified.
Can you ta- can you say, are they close?
Yes, yes, they're close.
So what are the qualifications we're looking for?
So the best qual- well, maybe that's something that Dwayne can speak to as.
They got Dwayne. Oh goodness.
Well, I I can take it if you want, but you're the, you're the count.
Really count, you're the.
I just want their two paragraphs and.
Yeah, the end of the day, we want somebody who's looking at our financial controls. Do we have the systems in place, um, to control our finances appropriately according to government accounting stand, generally accepted accounting standards? Um, that are promulgated by the federal government non-down. And then, um, do our statements of financial position in the different reports. Reflect true to what our financial position actually is, or are we using funny methods for math learning? And so both firms do a sampling technique to look at those things from a policy control perspective. And then do the financial reports reflect that. At fairly to what the actual financial position was or of the city is.
So.
It's like how about.
You like the AVA?
I think, I think AVA is, would be a fantastic, um, firm. I think Alman has a slight edge. And based on their experience and familiarity of doing several audits. Of government entities of a similar size in nature as as Martindale.
Do you, you, you learn as well?
Oh my gosh.
You, you recommend Alman?
My recommendation's Alman.
That's all they do is municipal.
That's all he do. Yeah, he told me he doesn't do.
Make a motion? Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Well, just then, which one would you recommend? Which one do you think does?
Oh, uh, Alman's fine. I mean, I've spoken to him and.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
The other, they, they just happen to be the only other firm out of ten that replied. Um.
Ten?
That we sent out.
Reply?
No, I I'm saying out of ten requests we sent out for proposal.
Only two replied.
Replied.
Okay.
I don't know them. I I I found them, I think, on the website for the, um. The city of, um, where did I say? Laverne, yeah.
Yeah.
Um. But, um, yeah, Al- Alman's fine. I did speak with them and, uh, he wants to do the work.
That's on. Okay, I make a motion to, uh. To use Alman Accounting Firm to perform city of Martindale's yearly physical audit.
Okay, okay.
It's a, it's. Physical, physical, not physical. You're sorry. Sorry.
It's like, it's like, we've been here for a while. Maybe your glasses just aren't working that well.
Yeah, tilt, can it tilt ahead just, just to right?
Let's try one more.
Terry, Terry. So we have a motion and a second, um, is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, we have one more item. And so we had went out to bid for engineering construction for the, um. Uh, grant for the treatment plant that, uh, that we got last, last year, wasn't it? Can we fund the grant? Anyway, we had sent a few months ago all of the plans and what was going to be done in the. In the grant and the first round of bids, nobody came. And then last Thursday, we did have two people come, and so Gary Freeland, our engineer, came. And with his assistant and they collected the bids. And then they are making the recommendations, uh, that we have included in the packet.
I was gonna say, I'm Melanie Norris. I don't think I've met most of y'all here.
I know I recognize you.
So I can help answer any questions.
You've been waiting all night.
It was quite a process. I was watching you all do this and, um, the the bids were actually very close. And how they had to calculate which one would be the one that they would recommend.
Yeah, because we had the base bid and then four alternates. And I could kind of explain that if I have any questions, but one was a lot lower on the base bid, I mean, alternates, and they were kind of flip-flopped. So when you compared it, it was very close between the two contractors.
So as with our Northwest River Road grant, costs keep going up and so we had to. Lower our expectations of what we can get done with the grant money. So that's what the alternates are that she's talking about.
Yeah, so the base bid, um, basically covers everything at the carpet treat load stations. There's some paving work there, some electrical work. Um, and as well at the wastewater treatment plant, so the base bid to replace some isolation valves at the ponds. And do some irrigation improvements, irrigation prep works, basically clear out some of the brush, prep for any future irrigation expansion. Um, and then just looking at the budget, we broke out the fence of the wastewater treatment plants into four alternates, basically split it every side. One of the each sides, just because we knew that was probably going to come in over the budget, um, so our recommendation is to accept two of the alternates there.
And this was a five hundred thousand dollar grant initially?
Four hundred.
Four hundred, and it's still, I mean. But you're having to reduce the scope of the work because of how long it's been since we originally got the grant or?
And it hasn't even been that long, but costs do keep going.
Yeah, especially just the fence cost, not very high cost or that big policy, so the security.
So we had, we had to use, we had to do the hot security fence, that's a must.
Um, it's a TCQ.
Good old state of town.
So what, which one are you guys recommending?
So, yeah, I talked to Pete, kind of after we got the bids and those prices came in, and his recommendation, top thing is to do basically the whole. Front of the entrance, that's the main priority, so that's alternate two. And then the secondary priority is the backside of the fence, because I know there's some. Open land back there and I think some issues with dove hunting and whatnot, so that was kind of the second alternative, which is alternative number four. So basically the front side, the backside, and then no big security fence on the two sides would kind of be a durable property.
But refresh my memory, I mean, the fence cost seemed kind, when we discussed this last time, the fence cost seemed really high.
Yeah, so we'd actually estimated it even higher than it came in. I think we had around forty-five dollars a linear foot and it came in around forty, the lower bit, I think, was on thirty-five.
So total cost of the fence would be?
Um, it's broken down with the two alternates. It's different because the linear feet's different on each side. But it was the same.
Now, remember, I had a question, it's just, it's just the fence, I mean.
Yeah, the six-foot-tall fence and then it's got that barbed wire.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, we are doing other things though.
I understand, I understand about the lift, lift stations and all that. I have no problem with that, but I remember this conversation, the. That seems awfully, awfully high, but. But that's a T, that's a TCQ requirement.
Yeah, it's a, it's a long charge of that, too.
Why, I'm just curious, I'm like, why is TCQ so particular about the fence? I mean, just.
I think it's just a safety measure for them, for keeping people away from the ponds.
Fence was originally, I think, two hundred and seventeen thousand, so what, what is it?
No, it was over that, it was almost two fifty. Was just the fence. It was, that's me, I remember that, I just.
I was hope.
Hey.
So can you go back to the first one? Are you, could you tell us what vendor you're suggesting here?
Yeah, so we got bids from two contractors, G Two Company and Noble General Contractors.
Yeah.
Um, because see, the base bid, G Two Company came in pretty low, but then they're higher on all of the alternates, which is all of that fence cost.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Noble came in much higher on the base bid, which was everything that was not the fence and kind of lower on some of those fence costs. Um, we did have like that yellow, they had an error in their bid tab, so we had to update their price, which increased a little bit based on their unit price.
So if I just did G two, you wanted to do the two eighty-eight plus sixty-three plus seventy-two?
Yes.
So that's four twenty-three.
Correct.
Four twenty-five, maybe around that.
Yeah, and kind of the plan, and I've spoken to G two, um, on this issue with, they understand that we have the four hundred, four hundred thousand dollar budget. And basically, we just want to build as much fence as we can. So our plan is to kind of request them to do the fence last. Kind of see where we fall, make sure we don't have any change orders we're going to need on any of the list station improvements. And then just kind of max out our fence budget and hit that four hundred thousand dollars.
Are are we going to be out of compliance with TCQ because we did not complete this?
So there's already the security fence around the ponds, that's the true requirement is that there's a fence around the ponds. This is just additional security around property.
Is there, is there, when you guys did this, sorry to interrupt, but when they did this, I was confused because I knew there was already a fence around that.
Yeah.
Talked about this before.
We're meeting TCQ, we're calling it the fence around the ponds. This is just their typical.
Is there any way to subdivide, I mean, have a separate contractor get this for the fence? Because fencing is not specialized. You know, like lip pumps and all that kind of electrical aspect, but a fence. I mean, there's no, is there any way to get a separate bid?
Is the price going to continue to go up while we're getting on these extra bids?
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
No, I mean, because not with this grant funding, because we are on a timeline with the funding where we need to have the contract completed by the end of January.
Oh.
And so that's all, that's all.
Answer my question, got a question.
Uh, Melanie, does this include the, the, does the base bid include the irrigation upgrades?
Um, at the wastewater treatment plant, so what you're doing is basically adding in some little stub outs. So that we could come back in and tighten the future to then extend the irrigation. And then they're clearing out some of the brush. It's basically land prep, but it's not full irrigation.
I missed that. That irrigation improvement was the whole dice. Because that takes us from a fifty thousand dollar permitted level or fifty thousand gallon permitted level to an eighty thousand dollar. Eighty thousand. That's several, that enables a lot more development in our area.
Yeah. Yeah, they're basically preparing it, they're, so there's like the irrigation around the ponds. Uh, we're adding in like some tees, scrubbing out pipe and adding in valves so that that could be extended, but we're not extending like a full irrigation out through the site.
So there'd be additional costs for that.
Yes.
So we're, so we're, we're just putting like monuments in the ground of, here's where a sprinkler could be.
Yeah, and how much cost would that be?
I would much rather put a sprinkler in the fence.
Yeah.
I thought I said the whole thing, I just.
Exactly. Thank you for your attention. Yeah, good point. I'm all about the, yeah, yeah, that's critical. Extremely good point.
We, we need, yeah, the capacity is.
That's supposed to be important.
The capacity is our, for us to bridge to the next step is the most critical. Aspect, um, because we've got commercial development coming on eighty and we're going to need.
Yep.
We're applying for another grant right now.
Linzola.
Huh?
Linzola, they're, they, they're trying to do something. So that's the most current, and we have the houses on North River Road on the, from Linzola, there's going to be.
That's what we need, not the snake.
And then Mayor, what did you just say?
We're applying for another grant.
For what?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand for upgrading.
For what?
For upgrading more on the treatment plant.
Do you know what grant that is?
That's that one that we met that Monday.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And we're. We'll, we'll specify that more if we get through the first round.
So do you have a recommendation, Jared, of. Changing the way the work is done on this grant or this bid or?
I don't think we can at this point, can we?
So with the water valve installation, we're literally. Irrigation gate valves, isolation gate valves. Irrigation land prep. Irrigation poop mudder, line replacement. So we're not doing any pipes in the ground?
Just basically like ten-foot stub outs for a future extension.
Just.
What's first about? Explain to this, alright, so if I have, so if we have in the middle of a field. With three ponds that are fenced off, right?
Yeah.
We have irrigation system that kind of goes like this, more or less, but we don't close the loop. You know, if they're, I don't know if this is right, I'm not thinking of it as, we only irrigate about half the land, more, right?
Yeah.
So these stub outs, are they just kind of like little things plotted out in the middle of a field where we have to run pipe to?
What you means by by stub outs, it's only going to just tap the, the, the irrigation land, the existing, uh, irrigation land. And run the, run the tap from ten feet out, right?
Yes.
That's hardly nothing. It's hardly any type of irrigation, I mean, I mean.
So, so that increases the. So we go from like five sprinkler heads to like ten sprinkler heads, is that what we're doing?
But it's in the, in only ten foot outward.
Yeah, you need to, you need to extend these lines out.
So how long we need to extend the line?
So are our lines?
I want to say probably about maybe forty feet.
Oh, so we gotta go forty feet, so we gotta add thirty feet to the ten feet.
Because you have to. You yourself a buffer.
And we need, and we gotta put a staked fence up for TCQ requirements, I mean, this doesn't.
Now, the TCQ requirements were around the pond, there's already a fence.
We already got a fence.
I, I don't want to create controversy. Because maybe doing exactly what you said achieves exactly what I'm, the intent was to achieve is to be able to get enough water. Out of the ponds so that we can increase our, our capacity limits of how much stuff goes to the ponds.
I, I still, I can't wrap my, I can't wrap my head around the fence. We've got a fence already. And that's to keep people out, right? I mean, that's.
Out, out of the ponds.
Out of the pond.
We have trespassing cows going in there, breaking stuff. Yeah, people, yeah.
Can we lock a gate? Can we lock?
There's no, there's nothing.
There's no gate on the back side.
Can we put a gate? That'd be cheaper.
That's what this is.
Big, long piece of fence.
So like quarter-mile fence. Or maybe more.
If we had an issue, if we had an issue, I mean, I, I, I kind of, I can't grasp my head around. We got fence around the ponds, right?
Yes.
Oh, like, gonna go Google Earth, so it is lit like twenty feet away from each pond, like it's just like right there. But on the forty-acre property, it is not fenced off.
But the ponds are fenced off.
Ponds are fenced off.
And that's the problem, ponds, ponds being fenced off is a safety issue.
Ponds being fenced off hits a minimum requirement, but we're getting a lot of trespassing and things coming in, breaking our equipment, our irrigation systems in the field. The cows or whatever else.
All they have there is a barbed wire fence.
So you say cows, is that somebody else's cows?
Yeah, we're not running.
I mean, I mean, so I mean, I, I don't, I still, I still can't grasp all this. I mean, you put a barbed wire fence around it. You got your high fence around your ponds and you put a barbed wire fence like e- everybody does, keep the cattle out and put a gate up. But does that require the TCQ requirements to be a high-security facility? Is that, is that what it boils down to?
Again, my, the intention of all this was increase the amount of, of effluent that we could irrigate. Go ahead, put it, uh, that, that we can irrigate and fix the, um, electrical systems and crockett so that way our generator. Right now, we have a backup power there. So this, then crockett, we're good. Doing even more than we need to do in crocker because we're getting a turnaround, so it makes it easier for people.
So, so, so here's the, so there's the fence, show us the fencing.
You see the full, thin, black line.
That's the fencing. So the, so if I take it for, so the ponds are fenced off.
All around.
All around. So the problem is, is the rest of the property, people trespass.
Okay.
Well, not necessarily people.
Yeah.
People and cattle.
Yeah.
I still, I, I just don't, I still don't understand that you need that type of fence. I mean, you got the fence around the pond, can you just put a regular barbed wire fence around? That keeps cattle out and put a gate with a lock on it? Maybe. I mean, all over the country, people have, they have, they have a ranch, they have a barbed wire fence, five strand, and they have a gate with a lock on it.
How, how creative can we get on change orders?
Um, typically you're creative. My only question is on the current funding side, I'm not a hundred percent.
Fair.
But we're within irrigation piping, so I feel like we could.
Yeah, look at it.
Yes.
At least, it might have been something that you guys designed in, but we just lost, lost the sight of, does that, is that give us enough, you know, water per second going out the, out the pipe to be able to put more water per second into pond?
What size is that line, are we gonna put up there?
It's the same size as the existing one, yeah, cuz we didn't plan, we basically tried to plan for the future expansion, but it's, it's not actual like full irrigation improvements.
Please, please give me clarification, I'm still a little confused by the fence. About the T C Q requires this particular fence because of the security? Is that for the whole property or just for the pond?
The pond and the pond house, which is what is currently being met out there.
Yeah, I think we're meeting the minimums of T C Q, we're going above the minimums but to address.
The whole property.
The whole property.
We need, we need to get away from that.
And that's where I'm going to, let's not do the alternates, do, do the smallest base bid.
Yeah.
And change order what we need to, add more sprinkler heads to.
Yeah, totally agree.
Longer lines.
More lines, whatever it is, so make sure we get that, that eighty. And if that's already designed in, as you go back and, you know, review your plans or whatever, we're able to achieve that uh, higher capacity permit um, with the system that's being put in with this.
Then maybe we do look at the fence or something, but.
Well, I wanna save that overhead for some change orders.
I will say, cuz you can only change order up and down a certain percentage, so we wanna try to maximize.
We're almost at three hundred, right? We're only looking at twenty percent, twenty-five percent at most. Can you change order twenty-five percent?
Yeah, I think that's the maximum, it's twenty-five percent.
If we go back, well, twenty-five percent of three hundred is going to be.
And but you said it has to be finalized by the end of January?
We need the contract signed by the end of January.
Yeah, we're getting really close to start changing all this stuff around.
Cuz we can, we can do change orders and change some of this go back contract inside, that's why we've got that twenty-five percent allowance to be able to change things in and out there.
Cuz I guarantee, I guarantee it's not that expensive, but barbed wire fence, five strand proper, it's not that expensive.
But sometimes if the grass gets really high, it's probably hard to see that barbed wire fence there, and they've been running into the ir- irrigation pipes and the fence, I guess.
Well, there was one grass cutter that did that, but that's not normal.
Okay.
We could put tinsel around it. Be glittered.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Glitters would something different.
Jared, I'm kinda going with you, I'm going with you.
That's if you come on the property, you get glittered.
Can we add alternates, can we, can we um, contract the alternates later? Do we have to contract, make that decision right now?
I think for, so it's all packaged together as that one bid, so yes.
They're, they're optional contract line items.
My understanding is you can, you have to accept the base bid no matter what, if you're going to make the motion to do that, and then you can select whatever alternates cost that. But since it's all one bid, one contract, I believe that all has to be done by one time. But I would say, I think there is some flexibility on what we can change with scope after we move forward with that contract.
If, for example, the co- lower the cost of the fencing and cheaper fencing, and then it put it more for the irrigation.
Or no fencing.
Well, yeah, there you go. Can we do that? I mean.
It's just that change order issue, and what's, at what point do we have to go out and rebid it?
I know the limits are the twenty-five percent up and down.
Yeah, if you change the whole fence, that's more than twenty-five percent of the adjustment that you're saying we're allowed to make if we accept this contract.
It could be as simple as cut the barbed wire off the top. You know.
That's impossible.
Yeah. We got a few more sprinkler heads or whatever.
So do the fence, but don't do the barbed wire across the top?
Well. Now, we'd be really, it'd be really good to know whether we're getting that, that, if we're getting enough water with the upgrades.
Exactly.
Stub outs, whether we're going to achieve that eighty thousand gallon.
We didn't do this one first.
So, so, but is, so would, would we keep the old fence around the pond? Would they be taken out?
I think we just keep it.
I think you keep it unless you get the entire property surrounded.
Yeah, you have to, you have to, cuz you're not.
That's the only way that you meet the requirement for T C E Q.
Yes, I agree, yeah.
We gotta find a way to.
Yeah, the, the whole, the whole person do came up after that whole non-security deal. And they, they wanted that fence around the water plants, and we just wanted us to keep the troopers up and that terrorism and all that.
Oh, we got some real terrorism out there, that, we got, we got boxers out there do terrorism.
Terrorist cow. We got terrorist cow.
Who makes the call on when we have to execute the alternates?
I do. I was trying to keep it under wraps, it's me.
Well, I mean, cuz I think you need to make the motion and then.
Because if we do, cuz I, I'm thinking is, we motioned to accept the base bid of G two company, lowest price bid. And we don't exercise the alternates at this time. And if for some reason we have to select alternates by January thirty-first.
As far as I know, you have to do it at this time with the single contract, but as far as I'm aware. You know, I'm very bad.
We, we might be back in this room with counsel.
Alright.
Cuz I, I I hate to make a bad decision on, on this, and we accept the biz, we accept the alternates, and this is what I'm contracted to do, and we're going forward instead of just saying, you know what, let's just, we already rebid it once, let's rebid it again.
Yeah, we delay the timeline. I know there's some grant issues where I think you can't apply to new ones, and there's some other possible repercussions, but.
Hey, Jared.
Where did this grant come from? Um, it's C D B G, so it's from T V A Texas Department of Agriculture.
Different from the GLOs, folks. Yes, Pete.
Could we, uh, we just, uh, forget about the fence, cuz you know, that's something they came, they, they haven't really handled about the fence and around the perimeter of the wastewater thing. They, they like it, they, they like the idea that it's fenced around the pond, but they, they prefer one day that you put a fence around it.
One day, they prefer one day, okay, I like.
Which, which?
One day.
Which, uh?
What I'm trying to say is that if we can, uh, instead of the fence, we can utilize more capacity out there, strip them all out, do more pipe out.
Um, which of these alternates is the front gate?
So the very front gate off of ridge is already getting done with the base bid.
Okay, so we're just, which of these is the back fence?
The back fence is.
Oh, we opted for.
Two.
Two?
Yeah, cuz four would be kind of that front long stretch on that rectangle, and then two is the very, very back front. So.
So that might, that might be the recommendation then, is to do the base, company G two base bid two hundred and ninety thousand more or less with sixty-three thousand. And then that gives, when we look at twenty-five percent change orders, now we get the twenty-five percent of that sixty-three to play with. To maybe de-scope the design of that fence. Capture ten, fifteen thousand dollars out of that and put that towards more piping and a change order that goes from, you know, ten foot stub outs to twenty foot stub outs, and maybe we can play a little bit de-scoping on alternate two, applying it to base bid part, cuz we don't have, run into quite a similar but twenty-five percent ceiling. Otherwise, that twenty-five percent ceiling is basically seventy-five thousand dollars. Seventy-two thousand dollars, somewhere in that range. So that only gets us to three fifty. We still would, we could use another fifty thousand dollars almost, but we can't get there without busting that twenty-five percent threshold. However, if we look at twenty-five percent of uh, the total of alternate two in the base bid, three hundred and forty. Now you're six, seven, you're now like ninety thousand dollars is your twenty-five percent change space.
Matthew.
And we might be able to, might be able to squeeze a little bit more out of.
All over this, Matthew, what are you doing?
He's looking for his original bid.
Oh, yeah, cuz you don't bid.
So that, that's probably be my recommendation. It would be the, the G two base bid and the alternate two.
When you say alternate, do you really mean alternate, or do you really mean like a segment? Like is that an alternate to the?
Well, yeah, they're the same.
Additional pieces.
Segments, yeah.
Okay, they're just altered, so again, you some flexibility with how the pricing came about. Gotcha, that's what I thought we were talking about, but I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, two would be that back fence, and then depending on how numbers and everything work, you could possibly still give the back perimeter fence and potentially add in some more irrigation.
So we never saw the alternatives. These are things that have changed during scope of the process with you guys.
I believe the fence was always in the scope, it was just never broken out until we did a final cost estimate.
No, it wasn't, cuz I remember that, that's what I was looking for. So what, I don't, I refresh my memory, what's a total grant amount?
Four hundred thousand.
For construction?
Yes.
I think the, the total grants like.
Five hundred.
Yeah, but maybe more than that.
No, it was about five hundred thousand.
I think we can even know that in order for us to properly make the, you know, I know, I know, I like your creative accounting. But, you know, when we're talking about two eighty-eight, two ninety, and we're only adding sixty, you know, we're at, we're not close to five hundred.
We need a four hundred number for this one, just construction only.
So this grant's only for four hundred?
For construction.
Okay, so where's the, where's the rest of the money in the process? Oh, it's that?
It's likely in the turn.
And why, sorry, for, yeah.
Alright, well, I agree with your, you know, I mean, that's the only way to, there's no other way to creatively accomplish what we're trying to get, you know, get done.
Yeah, it's the best way to ring the T-shirt, I know.
The goal is to get capacity. So.
And, and to be fair.
Now, we don't have a sort of cut answer, you know, I don't think we've fully understood, that's our, the purpose of this grant was, was capacity. Everything else was just, you know, whatever the.
It's capacity, electrical upgrade, electrical refunds.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I wish we had put four on it, and we didn't do any bets. So how do you wanna word this?
Yeah, I, I go um, accept the bid from G two company, the base bid and alternate two.
Alright, I make a motion to accept the bid from G two company for the base bid plus alternate two. Base bid of two eighty-eight, eight fifty, and alternate two of sixty-three, one fifty. With the caveat that we focus on trying to maximize our capacity on the wastewater plant for any other changes, work order changes we can do on, on the project.
Should we specify exactly?
No. Our capacity is just covers the broad terms, I think.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to leave a little.
Leave it for them to be creative. We're on the same page?
Is there?
Alright, what do y'all have to say? I'll second that, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Since you're taking our, your order, our order off memory, before you sign, contract, send us the for funds in the truth, please confirm the alternate two is in fact that back.
Yes, I will.
It is.
I was gonna ask, since y'all are closed tomorrow, we have money for the holiday, and we're on a tight timeline, if we could sign the notice of award, just letting that contractor know the amount and that that contract's coming, and then y'all would still sign the contract and everything. That's y'all's call, but.
We'll talk with that guy later. Isn't that, is that something you need to go home to the firm with tonight?
No, 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 it's more just they, and this contractor is good to work with, I think, so I already kind of give him a heads up on the timeline of needing it at the month by the contract sign, cuz you have to have signed contract and free construction meeting then. So it's more the.
Okay.
Bond, it's not, it's their issue. So the notice of award just lets them kind of get started on all of their processing.
We have that template?
I do, yes. If it's in a G honestly, right, right now before I leave, if you want.
Mayor, if you want, then we'll, we'll have that.
Okay, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Oh.
Make a motion to adjourn at nine fifty-six.
I was off my.
I'll second that.
Okay, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.